The Lake Forest Podcast is supported by viewers, listeners, and businesses just like you. Looking for the best pool supplies? Look no further than Dohany's Pool Supplies. With a history dating back to 1967, this family-owned business offers everything families need to keep their pools clean and sparkling, from chemicals to equipment. Plus, customers enjoy free shipping on all orders. Visit Dohany's Pool Supplies today at dohany.com, D-O-H-E-N-Y dot com, to learn more. Forest Bluff Real Estate Team serves Illinois, Wisconsin, Lake Forest, and Lake Bluff, John Joseph Fitis, Laura Lee Van Fleet, and of course, Michelle Parnell. Get a free market analysis now at forestbluffrealstate.com. For the best cannabis in the world, look no further than Iliad Epic Grow. Owned by Lake Bluff's own Rich Rusich, they are a cannabis cultivation center focusing on hard-to-find small-batch products that will delight both the occasional user and gonji A. When visiting Michigan, ask for it by name. Epic products, exceptional process. For more information, email info@iliadgrow.com. Havy Communications has been helping first responders arrive safely since 1983. It's owned by Lake Forest's own Mike Havy. Check them out at havycommunications.com. Are you looking for beer, wings, and swings in Lake Forest? Well, check out Duffers Pub and their state-of-the-art golf simulators. This primo setup is the perfect place for your next corporate event. Yes, let your boss win. And of course, all the games will be on the TV, and you'll never go hungry because the za and wings are scrumptious. Go to Duffers Pub on Western Avenue now. We'd also like to say we're thankful for our Patreon supporters, Otto, John C., Helen, and Herrick. Morning Pete.
What do you say, Joe?
Your man Dion is, uh, did you stay up and watch that game?
I watched half of it, and then I woke up, you know, like six, and then I watched the other half. I'm like, oh.
Oh, you recorded it? Oh, yeah. Uh, I should have, I couldn't, I couldn't stay awake, and I wish I had. I was like, wow. I mean, he's just, just my screen here. Here we go. He's just, uh, wow. And then, I don't know if you saw that 60 Minutes piece?
Yeah, yeah. Well, that game was a top 10 most-watched game, I believe, and the amount of-
It's the highest-watched late-night game ever.
Uh, I didn't see that, but I wouldn't doubt it. I mean, 11 million. To get 11 million to watch something on a Saturday night.
At night, because the game started like, what, nine o'clock, 10 o'clock?
Yeah, and I was at Knollwood. I'm like, oh, man, I can't stay up this late. Nothing good happens after 9:00 PM.
It's very true. Especially, I tell them to my children.
When I'm at a country club on somebody else's tab, you know, that's not a-
You looked very nice there in the picture.
Uh, lovely listeners and watchers, Chris and Liz, shout out. They, uh, they fall asleep to us, Joe, and that's part of their routine.
If they fall asleep to us, what happens if they listen to NPR Lake Forest?
Well, that's insomnia.
They might die. I don't know. If they fall asleep to us, they might die listening to the other ones.
Oh, those guys, they try so hard, which is, you know, hey, it's America. Do what you can.
Hey, they're doing little snippets now on their social media. I wonder where they got that idea from.
Uh, who cares?
Hey, imitation is the best form of flattery, right?
Joe, all I know is when you, when you take a piece of poo and you slice it up in smaller pieces, it's still poo.
As my, uh, one of my business professors taught me, Coke is a better product because of Pepsi. McDonald's is a better company because of Burger King. I mean, the list goes on and on. The competition is a good thing, right? I'm a free-market guy, so I love competition.
I wouldn't give him the credit as competition. I think it's a different-
It's really not. It's a different source. I, hey, you know? I listen to WBDM News Radio, and then I listen to WBEZ sometimes. Everyone I'm driving, though, it might be dangerous. No, actually, actually, during the Madigan years, WBEZ was one of the few places that actually, um, uh, went in-depth on some of the Madigan stuff. Them in the Tribune.
I think they, they provide a platform for the people that won't come on here, you know, the liberal, far-left. I came up with a new name as I'm watching a Blue Blocker commercial, you know, those sunglasses?
Oh, yeah.
It's, I don't know if I want to call it Prue Blocker or Progress Blocker, but all these people that are against progress, all the blockers. Getting back to the Prue blockers, I wish I had the Prue blockers because I guess she, she took five months to, you know, reflect and find herself, find her gee, or whatever you call it. And she put that piece out, Joe. What, what was your take on her piece?
Well, my initial reaction when I first saw it was, how can we miss you if you won't go away? The election results speak for themselves. People, as we said the day after the election when we did this show, people didn't just speak, they shouted.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to regurgitate the old stuff.
No, I don't either, but, but she, but, and look, you know, now it's becoming-
Let's go to the points of contention in her article, Joe, where she talks about being divisive, and you got to be careful of the sources of information. That's why, that's what I'd like us to address, because I believe she was offered a platform by you twice, right? And I know I offered three times.
Yeah, I mean, look, people, the door will always, as far as I'm concerned, and I think as far as you're concerned, the door is always open for her to come on the show. Um, obviously, she's choosing not to. Are you opinionated? Yes, you, you are certainly opinionated, Pete. I mean, there is no question about it. Anyone that meets you knows you have an opinion within 30 seconds.
But why do I have, hold on, why do I have that opinion?
Because you're basing it on a certain set of information, and you're not hearing from the other side. So, a great, the best example I think of is the show we did with Anthony Vega, the Lake County Clerk. We had talked a lot about stuff we had heard about him taking over, screwing up the polling places and all that stuff. People can go back and watch that show. And Anthony, Anthony didn't say, screw you, I'm not coming on your show. Anthony said, put me on your show. I want to talk about it. And we did talk about it, and I think when we were done with that show, we had a great, a very, a very good appreciation for him personally, but also for what he had to do to get these polling places ready and the issues that, so we had a very different opinion of the subject once we were done with him than when we start.
Right.
So, I think, um, you know, whether it's, it's true or anybody else here in town, Senator Morrison, um, any other, any other folks, if, if we say something, uh, that really sticks in your craw, and you say, God, that's wrong, or I'd like to give my side, door's open, right?
If it was really truly wrong, Joe, don't, don't you think they would be-
Well, but Pete, there, there are certain issues where no one's right and no one's wrong. It's two different opinions, right?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Right or wrong? Okay. You have this Democrat, these people that make a living off of their politics, right? There's a strategy that's in place that they do. Prue's part of it, Julie Morrison's part of it, Susan Garrett is part of it. And part of their strategy is they're counting on nobody else on the other side, say, the conservative side or the mid-side, to keep up or put up an effort to challenge what they do. So, they just throw this stuff out, and nobody says anything, so it must be true. Is that their strategy? I mean, you're the political guy. What is the strategy?
It is essentially a strategy. You, I think you, you described it very accurately, and that is, um, there is a strategy, and both sides in politics do this. Let's not say liberals have the exclusive ownership of this.
Republicans are idiots too, so, all right.
As, as a moderate Republican, I totally agree. I won't say their names, but you know who I'm talking about.
Look at Dan Rogers' Facebook post.
Well, all right, I'm not gonna, we talked about that before. I'd like to have, I, I've met Dan a couple of times now. Good guy, when you meet him in person. I think, we'll talk about that on another show, because I think he wants to come on with, he indicated to me that he wants to come on, and I think he's one that, I think if he clears the air-
He indicated she wanted to come on too, Joe. Whatever.
Um, but here, but back to, back to your initial, initial point here, sometimes we get off, off-topic, and that's why there's another show called On Topic.
On Topic, yeah.
Um, the, there's always going to be this back and forth, right, of, of, of any issue, whether it's a national issue, a regional issue, or a local issue, right? The greatest trick in the book is saying there's this other side out there that's, that's mischaracterizing things, that's putting out fake news.
Us versus them.
Right, exactly. And it, the, the, the best foil to that is, you know, here they are saying there's all these awful news sources out there that are putting out this, this wrong information, yet when those sources offer them an opportunity to come on, they won't come on.
That's my point in the Prue article.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, the door is always open. She's a, the questions that I would have for her if she were to come on are very simple. Number one, the biggest question is, are you running again? Is, are you, is your political career, I don't want to call it career, but is, are you planning to run again for mayor or for another office? Um, are you planning to run candidates for other offices? Um, and she got more partisan in this article than she did when she was running for mayor. She specifically used the word Democrats. Um, she did everything she could. Well, she broke, well, that breaks the P.T. Barnum rule, right?
Way to go, Prue Biddler.
I don't care what you say about me, but spell my name right. She didn't even do that. But, uh, no, look, again, number one, this is America, so everyone's entitled to an opinion, and she has a right to use, to put it out there. But, you know, when you say, um, there's these fake news sources out there and mischaracterizing it, but then you won't, when that source says, come on, let's talk it out in an unedited way, I don't know.
I mean, why do they do that? Because that's, it's not just these-
Because conservatives do the same, the same shtick. If you turn on Tucker Carlson or any of those-
That's why people don't watch that stuff anymore.
You know, Mark Levin, all those crazy right-wing, uh, guys, you know? I, I always say, as the moderate Republican, uh, I'll use that Margaret Thatcher quote that I use all the time.
Yeah, you get it both ways. All right. Look.
So, I, I, see, it's a free country, so we're going to say what we want to say. She's going to say, and her supporters are going to say what they want to say. Until there's a place where we can say it together and, and discuss it out, people are going to have to make judgments for themselves. But the biggest judgment of all, the ultimate poll, Pete, is the, is the one taken on Election Day. And the one taken on Election Day this past April in Lake Forest was overwhelmingly, uh, against her and for Randy Tack. And, you know, we, we talked about that city council meeting, uh, this past week. I, I really think Randy really shined at that meeting.
Is furthermore, um, I'm not so sure personally that we should not allow these scooters on the bike path, because it is theoretically a confined area that allows kids to get into the central business district within reasonable proximity of their businesses. I realize asking them to walk two blocks might be a bit much, but, you know, some might do it. Where bicycles and perhaps these sorts of vehicles ought to be considered having some degree of precedence. Not that I think people shouldn't be able to walk there, but I think if you walk on a bike path, it's like walking in a road. Uh, you have to have some extra consideration. The other thing I'd just like everybody to know, and this is, is, I mean, this isn't something that we just came upon in the past two weeks. I mean, literally, from the day that I arrived, I began bothering Jason about this issue. And we agreed that we had to start with efforts at education and signage, which we did. Um, you know, and I think that what's happened over the course of the summer is that we just realized that those tools by themselves are, are truly insufficient for this. And what's the consequence of doing nothing? If you take a 70-year-old who gets hit by a scooter or a bicycle on a sidewalk, who sustains an injury, common injuries, let's say a hip fracture, the one-year mortality from that injury is 20%. The statistical risk of an elderly person being defined as virtually everybody older than me, um, in, of, who's independent, having that type of injury and losing their independence is also quite high. So, the, the cost of doing nothing to a large percentage of our citizens, and what's our average age in Lake Forest? I believe it used to be 64. I think we're down to 62. Um, but my point is simply this, that we spend a lot of time being concerned about the safety of children, as we should be, but this has to go the other direction as well, and we need to be concerned about the safety of our older citizenry as well. And so, I think that's really the necessity of all of this.
And we could talk about that meeting, uh, either now or later on in the show. But I'm just saying, I think the people got it right. I really do. And that's not just because I'm a conservative-leaning person and she's not. Um, but I, I really think the more we watch him in office, the more we say, um-
It, it's a no-brainer.
Lake Forest made the right call. And, and one of the questions I would love to ask Prue is, if you had won, what would you be doing differently now than what Randy Tack has been doing? I think that would be a great question to hear her take on.
Am I right or wrong saying that the three of those ladies are in cahoots? They're all part of the Democratic senatorial, slow-things-down, liberal express?
You know, I don't want to give them more credit than they deserve.
Well, locally, they are.
Susan, Susan Garrett is a retired state senator. Julie Morrison took her place. It's, I have heard from a couple of sources that when Julie's, uh, current term ends, she will not be running again. That's, that's what I've heard. Um, so, who'll see how they fill that seat?
Should I turn Democrat and run for Senator?
You know, that district goes all the way down to, it includes all Highland Park. It goes all the way to Northbrook. Um, it is, uh, it would be very difficult. Barrett Baby, who lives here in Lake Forest, ran once, uh, against her, and I thought ran, uh, I mean, he ran a very moderate campaign, well-funded campaign, had yard signs in a lot of places here in Lake Forest, and he still got clobbered. Part of that was the national headwinds when he ran in 2018.
I get it, but I'm talking about Julie Morrison locally, where you've got this homeless issue that, we got two problems, okay? We have the lawmaker that voted to make it harder to deal with the homeless. And number two, you have a, I don't want to, a woke bank. Is that a fair statement, a Bank of America? You have a woke bank that is letting the people sleep on their property?
I actually know a financial, I won't say his name, but there's a financial advisor who lives here in town that left, uh, the firm, he was with Merrill Lynch, which is, which got bought out by Bank of America. And there were a number of factors, but one of it, which was, he couldn't stand the, uh, political stance that Bank of America was taking, and so he went with a different firm.
They're out of Sam Brand. They're used to homeless in their town.
Yeah.
How many people go to, into a bank anymore? They might as well turn it into a hotel. Maybe that's what they're doing.
It's a marketing strategy. I, you know, that's true. The, the future of bank branches is something that is on, everyone's thinking about, because you're right, as, my kids have never, I don't, other than the safe deposit box, I don't know if we've ever, they've ever had the second foot in the bank. Um, and even that's becoming obsolete. People are having otherwise-
Have you seen Julie Morrison or Prue or any, oh, Prue did make a mention to my article regarding the homeless, because she didn't like that certain streets we should invite the homeless to, uh, hang out on?
Is that, did she say that? I'd love to hear her take, if, if that's what it is. I would love to hear if, if she wanted to be mayor, and, and maybe she still wants to be mayor. Um, I think it's a good question to ask. Uh, what would, what, what do you feel about those issues? And until she addresses them, um, you know, we don't know where she stands on. But I think it's a fair question that voters would want to know. And, and most importantly, how do we address these issues? Senator Morrison, um, Bob Morgan, who's the state representative, uh, that, that represents Lake Forest, um, how do you feel about this legislation 10 years into it? Would you maybe reconsider it or, or, or want to change it? Uh, because this is, it's not just a problem for, for Lake Forest. There's a lot of communities that are in the same boat that's saying, hey, we're, our hands are tied here, and we want to, and, and it's not being cruel. Every time you bring this up or other people bring this up, they, the other side twists it and says, you don't care about these people. You're, you know, you-
Let's go to our posts on our Lake Forest, Lake Bluff News page. We've had people, uh, kind of say, well, what, how can you say that about that poor man? How can you do this? I work for PADS and P-A-D-S, and I'm like, why are you taking this?
Yeah, but PADS came, and there's, the PADS came on on one of your posts, and, you know, I don't live on the internet and get into the, the, the internet is the devil's workshop. There's a, there's a lot of chatter, and I don't get into all of it. I love you, man. I love it. But my point, PADS came in there and said, hey, if you see someone that has a problem and needs, needs our caseworkers to identify, they gave the kind of thing, and I'll take that at face value, that, hey, if, if we, if you see someone, um, but, you know, I, I think, and again, I don't, I'd love to have somebody else, uh, clarify this. If a person says, no, I'm not interested in your help, unless they can be deemed a, a very serious, uh, threat, um, even PADS or the police or whoever can't do anything.
Bank of America is, is their, it's their own property, right? So, why doesn't that Christian guy come over and just set up his tent on their parking lot?
You know, you've, you've actually spoken with him, right? So, I, I've seen him walking, you know, if you walk, in fact, the city council meeting on Monday night, um, I'm getting out of my car. Two things I see when I'm getting out, I parked on Deer Path on the street, and I see, first, I see two kids speeding by on scooters on the sidewalk, and I'm like, little do you know, there's a meeting inside that building to deal with you guys. But then, number two, I see, his name's Christian, I believe. He, he, he's walking, but he, he was, he wasn't doing anything weird. He was just walking like a normal person. If I hadn't recognized the face, I wouldn't have thought twice. And he nodded to me, and I nodded. I just said, how you doing? And that was it. It was very polite, courteous. So, I don't, I don't think, at least, I don't have enough information to say, I don't think Christian is a threat, physical threat. I don't think he's going to hurt anyone.
Other than take a golf cart and ram that police car.
That was, I mean, yeah, that's true.
Dorfman, you didn't do your homework. You didn't check with Uncle Pete.
Well, when you've got 28 communities to cover, you're not going to hurt.
Joe, I'm trying to connect the dots with Julie Morrison, Garrett, and Biddler, that they put these laws into effect 10 years ago, not thinking about the consequences that are about to arise like right now, and it's happening right now. And then you have people that complain, hey, you should do something, yet they're not doing something themselves. Especially the PADS people, where my experience is, yeah, we'd love to come on, we'd love to come on, we'd love to come on crickets. And then you do get somebody from them to come on, and they're wasting time with Facebook chatter when they could be going out there and helping, you know, these people. So, that's all that I'm saying. It's, to me, that seems to be like the liberal, like, uh, I don't want to say judgment, or, uh, what do you call that when you wear a mask? What's that, uh, term that they use?
Um, virtue signaling?
Virtue signaling, yeah. It's all this signaling that, you know, their way of being is, my way is the higher or superior way. Everyone else is below me, yet I don't do anything about it myself. Could you word that in a better way?
You worded it pretty well. You're right there, Pete. I, yeah, and like we said earlier, the conservative side does the same thing. Turn on Fox News.
Yeah, 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 but it's-
Turn on whatever X he's on now or anything. Those-
And, and I think that's why those, you know, the 5% on either side, there's 90%. That's why I say I'm 90% right, that in the middle, people want to hear what is actually going on, and that's what we're trying to do. And everybody knows what our, if, if we're sitting on a fence, they're going to know which way we're going to blow over. It's a one mile an hour wind. But just pointing it out to be fair, that these things that are going on, Julie Morrison voted for this thing. Did Julie Morrison go out there and talk to these homeless guys and gals? They say they don't want to help.
I'm going to, I'm going to bet, no.
Yeah.
No, she could come on here and tell me I was wrong, and I'll accept that. Maybe she has done something, but my, my guess is no.
Okay. So, uh, you have Bank of America that hasn't responded to anything.
Now, but look, I mean, you, we talked about this last week. You, you went into the Jewel and you befriended, or, or, maybe befriended is not the best word, but you, you obviously established some relationship with, uh, the store manager there, which Jewel is basically a big company.
Old store manager is a different animal than a-
I get it, but there's a branch manager at this Bank of America.
You might as well be a politician to be a bank manager.
My, my wife worked at a bank many years ago when she was young, and, you know, it's, that's not an easy job. There's, they're usually young people working in those banks.
Actually, it is now, because nobody goes in a bank anymore.
Well, yeah, that's why there's less of them, but, um, they don't care. It's a bank, a local bank.
Hey, Susan, why don't you go out there and talk to Christian? Why don't you go out there and talk to, uh-
Maybe they have. Tell us what the, come on our show and tell us what it was all about.
Of course, they didn't. They're not going to get their hands dirty on this stuff. They're going to do this signaling stuff and then disappear, and then five months later come up with a post, hey, your sources are wrong. Whatever. All right. So, we had a city council meeting, Joe. I thought it was pretty, everybody wants to fix this thing, and it was interesting, uh, our guy Page, what was his name? Page? P-A-G-E. Jeff Page, yeah. He was on the corner-
Is your guy?
Okay, I'm Jeff Page. I'm at 207 Washington Road in Lake Forest. And, um, I know you've covered a lot of things, and certainly the police chief is aware of a lot of this, but I think I would just go over this, and I can email the comments I will make to anyone who wants it. So, I've lived within a mile of Market Square for 30 years, and Saturday, September 2nd, I was coming out of Ferrantino's and was almost hit by two girls riding on bikes on the sidewalk. They showed no remorse, and they just kept on going. So, obviously, it wasn't a big issue for them. I was upset, so I went to Facebook, Lake Forest, Lake Bluff Neighbors, uh, page, and posted to see if anyone else had similar experiences. Within two days, we had almost 200 comments. Another woman also made posts there in the city of Lake Forest for a total of, total of 350 comments. Many said they wanted an ordinance and enforcement of not allowing scooters and bikes on sidewalks downtown. Some people didn't believe it was an issue, so I went to monitor it. Saturday, September 2nd, I went to Market Square at 2:30, and I saw 20 people riding scooters and bikes on the sidewalks. Saturday, September 9th, I went to Market Square at 2:00, and in 30 minutes, I saw another 20 people riding on the sidewalks. Thursday, September 14th, I went to the corner at Walgreens, Deer Path and, uh, Western. From 3:30 to 4:00, Deer Path Middle School gets out at 3:35. Obviously, this is the busiest intersection in Lake Forest. I saw 35 people riding scooters and bikes on the sidewalk in 30 minutes. I must admit, I took videos of those people on the sidewalks, and some people were upset. I took videos because many people didn't believe me or thought it wasn't a big issue. I stopped doing it and never posted on Face, Facebook. Friday, just this last Friday, at September 15th, I went to the corner of Deer Path and Western Avenue from 3:30 to 4:30. I saw 123 people on scooters and bikes at that intersection in one hour. 123 in one hour? That brings the total to 195 people I've seen on this, with scooters or bikes, on the sidewalks, around Market Square to Walgreens. 195 within three and a half hours in four days, three weekdays and one Saturday. Friday, there was an accident near Market Square. A woman who told me about it didn't see the accident, but was there shortly afterwards. Apparently, a girl was hit and didn't have a helmet on. The woman described the friends and the driver as horrified. In the 60s and 80s, when I grew up here in the 60s and 70s, there were rules not to ride bikes on sidewalks that were strictly enforced. I would never imagine riding, riding my bikes downtown. I proposed an ordinance for not riding bikes and scooters on sidewalks on Western Avenue from either Fresh Market, I mean, I can understand Woodland, but there was a little bit more, uh, space there, from Woodland to Fresh Market, to Walgreens. Uh, space there from Woodland to Fresh Market to Walgreens. Ideally, as the police chief said, all the way to Illinois, because I saw a lot of people going down, uh, from. Uh, Deer Path to Illinois, going downhill, going very fast. And obviously you got Dunkin' Donuts and a lot of businesses there. Um, and then from, uh, Western Avenue. To on Deer Path, from Western Avenue to Oakwood and including Market Square. You've already covered this. I proposed, um, a warning and then tickets for violations and, um.
Excuse me?
Pardon?
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
We actually have an ordinance in front of us that outlines. An area where we are talking about restricting this.
It sounds great.
So, you know, can you please finish up with your comments?
Yeah, I'm almost done. I propose replacing the five existing signs currently saying walk bikes. With larger signs saying walk bikes and scooters and include the ordinance number. And to add, uh, signs at Oakwood. At at Oakwood. Uh, at, I'm sorry, Oakwood, at Woodland and at Illinois that are bigger than the current ones. And, um. And particularly, um, you know, monitoring particularly around Market Square and the intersection of Western and Deer Path. And if it's necessary, I could understand. I could provide the idiot videos I took to police through the city council. And you can go to these Facebook pages. One is the, uh, Lake Forest, Lake Bluff neighbors. And then we also posted on the city of Lake Forest. Thank you.
Yeah, he's, you know, we talked, we talked for a bit and, uh. Passionate guy, passionate guy. He's, he definitely belongs in Lake Forest because he's one of those people that, uh, always knows he's right. And, uh, he was on the corner there videoing and he counted up over a hundred, uh. Uh, so I, I, a couple hundred, I want to say. Uh, at three fifteen or something, uh, scooters coming out and he talked. Then he went on the the city council meeting and he talked about it and. Basically, he had nothing much to say because they pretty much agreed with him that, yeah, we gotta, you know, correct this thing. And then you had the mom come up saying.
Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Katie Manley and I live at eight three seven Valley Road. And I'm here today just as a concerned mom. Um, I have a daughter who rides a scooter. Um, I'm with my daughter, her friends on a regular basis. There is a. A real divide in the community, obviously, between the riders and the non-riders. The children I know are not getting on their scooter in the morning saying, I want to speed around and hurt someone. They need education, but the community as a whole needs education because there's a backlash now. We have. Individuals filming our children multiple days, um, and posting about it. There are many.
I never posted.
You posted your comments about it. We can discuss that later. Please, don't interrupt me, please. Please. We can discuss this. I am just here asking for communication improvement on both sides. The children need to be educated. They're all in school right now at Deer Path, the elementary schools. What are we waiting for? Have someone in there tomorrow. The kids don't want to hurt people. They do not truly want any harm to anyone. But the children are now receiving. Comments from all sorts of people, even if they are walking their scooter. So it's just gotten out of hand on both ends. Parents are very concerned for everyone in the community. But the education needs to start tomorrow. Because this is getting out of hand. And it's, it's just. Needs to be addressed sooner than later. And as a parent, I will do anything to help. With education, I will help anyone that wants to get something going sooner than later. This, all these rules are great and they're needed. But. We still have days before all of that is approved. And all citizens, including our children, need to feel safe. In our town and right now they are not feeling safe. Because of. Certain comments and activities going on. So I just. For a mother's standpoint, I understand both sides and really it's just communication that is needed and it would help tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And but. It was funny was they kind of went at it in the meeting and you saw he interrupted her and stuff.
Education because there's a backlash now. We have individuals filming our children. Multiple days, um, and posting about it. There are many.
I never posted.
You posted your comments about it. We can discuss that later. Please, don't interrupt me, please. Please. We can discuss this.
Yeah, I hate when people do that.
After, after the meeting was over. Um, they were talking for a while. That's why I like to go to the meetings in person as opposed to just watch the video at home. Um, because you get a better feel of the atmosphere, but. Uh, she, they were, they were talking for a while and I was, I was, I happened to be talking to someone else. I said, look, they're talking. I hope this doesn't. And Chief Waldorf is is still in the room and we joke, we said, well, the chief's there to break it up if it gets out of hand. At the end of the day, I think they both supported what the council passed. Her point was you need to have more education. About this and we don't need to demonize these kids that people were really that the reverse was happening and. I agree. These are, these are what? Twelve, fourteen year old kids doing this. Um, they're not killing people. They're not.
Let me know when you're done.
All right, but. So I, yeah, education's a big part of it and and Jason, Jason Wikipedia. As you call, um, Jason said they're working with the schools to develop, um, uh, things. And it's really the, it's really the grade school and the junior high school, the middle school, excuse me.
Hey, parents, watch your effing kids. Don't put it on the police schools. Watch your damn kids.
That's true. And I, I think chief, I think any off-duty police officer would tell you the same thing. Um, but at the same time, there's a public safety issue. Watch your kids when, when your kids get their driver's license, watch how they operate the car too, right? I mean, kids, these kids, when they get become sixteen, seventeen years old. They, they, they get their license and they're speeding and and doing all sorts of crazy stuff in the car.
Do you drive a motorcycle down the sidewalk?
Nope.
What's the difference between a motorcycle and electric bike or a electric scooter?
Well, obviously the city council feels the same way. They unanimously passed this, um. Ordinance that prohibits, uh, the motorized scooters from being on the sidewalk.
Seventy nine. The ordinance, I think chapter seventy five dealt with the bikes and then seventy nine is dealing with this, I believe.
Oh, I got you. Okay. So, yeah, I, I think the council did the right thing. And like I said earlier, I think the speech of the night. Was Mayor Tac. Uh, he speaks with authority on this, being an orthopedic surgeon. Um, he brought out some very good data about the impact that a crash would have on an older person.
Yeah, break a hip. What, what are the numbers on that, Joe? You break a hip, you're seventy. What's the mortality rate?
My wife's grandfather, uh, fell. Um, uh, many years ago and, uh, because of a neighbor's dog running at him and. It was basically a death sentence for him. The rest of his life was, uh. It was very miserable and probably shortened his life. So, uh, it, it's, it's a very serious thing and. It's gonna take, it takes a village, or in this case, a city. It takes.
It takes parents.
Parents, yes, it does take parents. It takes education. Uh, we talk about, you go through all this driver's ed stuff. There needs to be some education. I remember back in the day. When I was going to school, the police officers would come to the school and tell us how to ride our bikes safely. So, um, I, I, I think they're working on that. Uh, I really, I thought Chief Waldorf did a very nice job. It was very. Um, uh, fair and and he obviously spent a lot of time on this. And.
He was going through his head.
Todd, but they don't have the bandwidth to do this completely. And he, that was his words. We don't have the bandwidth.
Get the bandwidth.
And as we learned this late later on, we were talking about this, these break-ins on Green Bay Road are far more serious than these kids riding the scooter.
Not yet. Look, you got, uh, okay, you're, you, you, you.
I'm more concerned about people breaking into people's houses than I am about kids riding a scooter downtown.
Well, when a kid has their brains all over the trail road.
Yeah, fair enough. And they said there was an accident. By Market Square last week. I don't know the details of that. I don't know if you got it or.
Well, maybe some of our loyal viewers and listeners will, will send it in, but it's, it's gonna take. They are going very fast with no helmet. And I'm in the brain business as my, you know, where I actually make some money. And life is all about feedback, okay? If you don't get the feedback that, you know, when you touch a hot stove once, you don't do it again. Till you get that wipeout and you get laid out, you don't have the feedback. If the parents don't give the feedback to their kids. Put on the damn helmet, keep that off of the sidewalk. Oh, you have no other way to get to school. If you got enough money to buy an electric scooter, you got a way. It's called the school bus stuff.
But I thought overall, the council meeting, that was democracy in action. That's local government, demo- local democracy. Did what it was supposed to do. People came up, they gave their opinions. We heard from the police chief. We heard from a citizen legislator, but Mayor Tac is not really a legislator, but. Hey, this is why we have private citizens holding these positions because. Dr. Tac brings his, uh, his expertise to the field. Um, on this. And at the end of the day, the council did the right thing. So it was unanimous. So I think the, let's see how this plays out. Uh, it's gonna die down now that we're getting into the fall. Obviously, kids are, are gonna be riding this less with the weather changing. Uh, let's see how it goes. But look, we, we've had traffic laws for as long as we've had traffic and we still have car accidents every day. So let's see how it goes. Hopefully this brings, this brings it down. Um, and people, particularly the older people feel safer walking in in downtown Lake Forest.
You cannot have a motorized vehicle on the sidewalk.
No.
Period.
That's the law.
That's the law. Okay. So what is a motorized vehicle? So. Randy. You got your mayor and you, and it's, uh, I'm glad you're there, but. It's so hard to get content because the meetings are so short. There was like a year ago, that would have been like a four hour meeting with, uh. What's her face? Uh, Prue's buddy. Melanie.
Melanie Rommel?
Melanie and, uh, that other dude, the, uh, the blue blocker.
Ray, uh, Bushman?
Bushman, yeah. Those guys, they would take a, they would stretch out a meeting, miss them horribly. Maybe we'll see Melanie because Prue's not gonna run again. They're probably gonna, they're scheming behind the scenes, probably to throw Melanie in there. Let's.
Well, we're gonna find out in a few months when people file for city council, what, what's up, right? There's, there's. Four seats up on the, on the council, uh, coming up in the. Uh, March election and the filing for that is coming up. I don't know the exact dates, um. But the, the, the seat that Joe Waldeck took. Is gonna be up, uh, as well as three others and, uh, forgive me, uh, Fresh Lax is gonna be up. He's term limited.
Yeah.
Uh, forgive me, I don't know the others off the top of my head, but, um, you know, let's see what happens.
Maybe Joe O'Reezy will come on and clue us in because I do believe in my notes here, they have an open call for the caucus. If you don't like what's going on, you can go. Let me see here. Horton Center, Tuesday, September twenty sixth. I guess that was a week.
Right around the corner.
Seven to eight P M. You can go in there and you can, uh. Be part of the problem or be part of the solution or both, uh. I'm not allowed in there yet. But if you want to go in and, uh. Look, if you're brand new to this city, go to the newcomers club, okay?
Great, great, great club. I'm part of it.
Yeah.
We had a great bears, uh, the, we had a great party at Josh Fox's house in Lake Bluff about the bears and. Josh figured out I'm on the podcast. So, uh, good dude.
Yeah.
I think I predict one day he will be mayor of Lake Bluff because everybody in town there knows him.
Oh, absolutely. So you have the newcomer club and then you have what Athena? What's the next level up? Whatever, whatever it is you graduate.
Encore?
Encore, yeah.
We're working on, but you know, Encore will let newcomers in, exhibit A.
Of course, they pay. It's a national pay up.
Debbie is like risen up in Encore and we're trying to get a couple of the ladies in charge of Encore to come on the podcast one week and talk about things, but. It's a, they're a nice, they're a social club. That's what they are.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and it's fun. It's, it's fun. We've met a lot of great people. There's, when we go to the Encore stuff, there's a lot of people that come over to me and, uh, watch the podcast.
My point bringing them up is if you're a newcomer, go to the newcomers club and then after a year you go to this, what's it calling in?
Encore.
Encore.
When you, when you want more, there's Encore over those TV ads.
And, and I made a suggestion to them, those people, it's a guy and a girl, I forget, uh, I kind of got a bad taste in my mouth from them when Randy was, uh, coming up for mayor. They.
They're not political.
Uh. There's a difference between political and.
Some of their members may be.
No.
The, the group, the organization is not, organization is a social club. They don't.
Right. So the caucus is not political, right?
Caucus's function is to run city, the city of Lake Forest, which is inherently political. It's not partisan.
Yeah.
But it is political, yeah, of course.
But my, my point is that the newcomers, the Encore and the caucus, I think that would help as a feeder system. To get more opportunities for the caucus to pick from because right now you're relying on. Forty-three people that are maybe halfway active in this. So really you got twenty-three people. If you can get something going with, uh. That newcomer in, in Encore, I think you get a better, uh, slew of candidates coming in.
I think they do. In fairness though, Pete, I think the caucus does allow a lot of new people. Joe O'Reezy has lived in Lake Forest less than ten years. And he's now, I believe, the vice president. Of the caucus. And if you go back in time, uh, Mayor Pandeleon, former Mayor Pandeleon, uh, moved here in, I think he said nineteen eighty-nine. And he was active in city government very quickly. After that.
Well.
So I, I think.
Why, why do you want somebody that knows nothing about the town to be able to vote on what's happening in your town? They've lived two months. Why would you?
Well, you could say that about me. I mean, I came in here in less than a year and here I am appearing on this podcast and I'm denouncing. Uh, the candidacy of Drew Beider and, and on social media, one of. One of her supporters said, you haven't lived here long enough. You don't understand this town. Basically go shut up and. Uh, let us, uh, people, uh, decide that. So.
They call it a conflict, the old guard conflict of interest, but my point is. You, you, you have a, a knowledge set of stuff that doesn't exist on the show in a time where it was needed on the political side of things. Okay, that's why you're here and you're growing yourself into it. My, my point is with that Encore newcomers club, that could be an inflow of people to the caucus. And I got pushed back when I suggested that they should do something like that. Specifically with Mayor Randy Tac, who was put up with from the caucus. So if the caucus isn't political, it's a system that's in place. You should have. This marketing team called the newcomers club or whatever. They should be able to do an informational for Joe O'Reezy and build up a bench for the caucus. That's it. That's, that's what I have. And they say, well, we're not political. I'm like, okay, fine. Uh, Safety Act, September eighteenth, and then what do we get the next day?
We get a series of, uh, break-ins. I, I've got, I, I happen to get a few, uh, bits of inside information because I, uh. Won't get into all the details, gonna respect the privacy of the people, uh, whose homes got, uh, broken into, but. Um, a, a text message. Found its way to me from, uh, my wife of, uh, of. That here, here was the picture. Yeah, I, I, it came over while we're on the show and I haven't, uh, I gotta see, uh, what the details are, but this is pretty scary stuff. I mean, thankful. Again, Lake Forest Police. They did their job and they did it extremely well as they always do.
Their four people are a number one.
Everything with the Lake Forest Police is a number one. Uh, we're very blessed to have them, uh, here, but. Uh, the, the, the big question's gonna be and, uh, you know, I don't, let me see if I can pull this up. And of course I don't have my reading glasses.
Uh, well, here's the, here's the approved charges just based on the initial, uh, uh, what do you call this alleged information? This guy's from, uh. He's not from around here. Let's see, criminal damage to property. That's a class four felony. Attempted residential burglary. That's a class two felony. Residential burglary, class one felony, burglar, burglary to motor vehicle, class three felony. Theft, that's a class A misdemeanor. Criminal trespass is a class A misdemeanor. Criminal damage to property, that's a class A misdemeanor. Uh, looks like he's gonna be held in Lake County Jail. And the tw- today, Wednesday is his first appearance in court, so. You're, uh, what do you say? You're innocent till proven. Guilty?
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't have Rick. Rick's the attorney and fortunately he's not with us today, but. Um, my question's gonna be, and tell me if it's already. my question's going to be, and tell me if it's already in there. Does the guy have any priors?
Uh, it doesn't say. Right now it's like, it's still. This is a news release.
Where's he from? What, what's, does it say what city he's from?
Wadsworth.
All right. So it's just one guy. It's only one guy?
Just one guy that I got on here.
So, I mean, let's see how it plays out. Let's follow this case. Um, the bigger point is the Safety Act, there's a, there's a toxic combination here of this, this Safety Act and a state's attorney, Eric Reinhardt, who, um, has, is more interested in the rights of criminals than he is in the rights of victims.
Well, what I think Joe is.
Toxic combination.
The people that live over there. Some of our buddies, uh, live that on that side of town. Buddies we talked about earlier in the show who don't want homeless people hanging out by them. They're going to find out that they are closer to the highway. And they're going to have a lot more visitors than we are on the east side. We may have this homeless guy from the train. But, uh, these guys are going to get the the, uh.
This is what on Green Bay?
Yeah.
So.
Just saying.
Yeah. I mean, these are, those are nice houses and obviously, but.
I'm sorry, it's not by you.
No, I'm not by Green Bay. I'm further west. I'm out, I'm out in the country. I'm in the hinterland.
Do you even go farther west? Well, the quote, these people that live over there that voted for all this stuff that are on the democratic side of.
Well, the house, I, I, without getting into all the details, I, I don't think the, the house that got broken into voted for.
I, 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 I don't know if they did or they didn't.
I, I'm pretty sure they did not. That's all I'm going to say.
All right. We'll leave it there. The FOIA people at the police, thank you. What we try to do is.
Good job. And great job apprehending this guy. Obviously the, the initial report I read was he tried to flee, um, and but.
Now with our guys.
Lake Forest cows, they do their job. Let's watch if Eric Reinhardt does his job because I don't think he will. Um, he can prove me wrong. And what they're trying to do, here's a little trick. Watch this.
P R U E, prove me wrong.
Well, but here's a little trick. These, these states attorneys are going to do, the, these two states attorneys, Kim Fox. Kim Fox and, and Eric Reinhardt are, what they're going to do is they're going to pick and choose and they're going to find a couple that stay in jail. Don't get bailed out or don't get released. Um, and they're going to say, here, look, the Safety Act works. We're keeping this person in jail. He didn't bail himself out. But as our, our guest last week said, a retired cop, um, the system is going to overwhelm. And you're, you're going to have a system that can't, it's easy to say on paper, we're, if we determine them to not be safe, we won't let them out. But there are hundreds, thousands of these crimes being committed and it's very difficult for the judges to, to go through this. That's why they had this. I, I get the concerns people, I'd love, again, I'd love to have a Safety Act supporter come on the show and give them their side. But what I, I, I always try to read the other side and see what their take is. The big thing they have, one of the big things you hear about with the Safety Act, um, is in this cashless bail. Um, it, no cash bail is the beforehand with bail, if you were rich, you got out of jail, but if you were poor, you had to stay in jail. That's one of the big arguments they make. Um, lesser can tell you that that's, uh, that's kind of hogwash that there's so many ways to get out on bail that um, that, that's not necessarily true. But I, I get it that are there two sets of rules for people because of their income? Uh, they bring up Kyle Rittenhouse. Uh, he got arrested in Wisconsin. But, you know, he became a cause of the conservative side and so they raised money for him and he was out in no time. Now ultimately Kyle Rittenhouse was proven, was found not guilty. Um, but.
Yeah, it was getting that bastard.
Bigger, bigger point in this is, is there, I'd like to hear, I, 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 I'd like to hear from Eric Reinhardt or
They ain't coming on.
Julie Morrison, Julie Morrison and Bob Morgan voted for the Safety Act. Tell us why. Give us your side.
I think the new age Democrats are like, um, uh, Holly Kim, Anthony Vega. You know, Trent, hate to use the term transparent, uh, but I think these old, these, uh, career politicians are gonna go by the wayside and these newcomers are going to come in. And I'm going to think, I think you're going to see more people doing what Severino did is hop over on a democratic side of things.
I don't want to talk about him anymore. If he wins the democratic primary, he can come back on the show. How's that?
Well, you wouldn't allow him on the show anyways?
He can come on. We had him on and we're going to have Jim Caris. Jim Caris is going to, um, Jim Caris is going to come on the show, working out the logistics of that. He's got a fundraiser coming up next week at Austin's.
I think people are tired of these games.
He's raising a lot of money, Jim Caris, by the way. So tough race, but, um, he's doing the things that, um, Mr. Severino, Severino couldn't do, and that was raise substantial funds. Uh, to actually run a competitive race. Now it's an uphill battle against Brad Schneider because Brad is, I think, I think a moderate.
Yeah, where's Brad Schneider? Who said?
Well, let's reach out. Let's reach out. He said it at a parade. Now let's reach out to his office and follow up on it.
That's what those people do. He's a career politician and I think people are sick of that stuff. Look, right now he's, uh, he's like cottage cheese, warm milk, you know? He's not stepping in any poo, you know, that's great. Okay. But eventually somebody's going to want somebody to do something. And I, I, I think that stuff is going to go away. And maybe there's somebody like you or me out there that go on a Democrat side that, hey, I'm a Democrat, vote for me. I, I, these lines of Republican and Democrat. I, I think that's, I think that's over. I think it's going to, people are going to start to get down to the issues. It doesn't matter how much this guy's going to raise.
People used to split their tickets. Um, I'll give you a very good example right here. In two thousand eight, not that long ago, Barack Obama wins the presidency and does extremely well here on the North Shore. That same day, Mark Kirk, Republican Mark Kirk gets reelected. Not, it was kind of close against Dan Seals, but he got, there were tons of people who voted, who split their ticket and said, you know what? I, I want Obama to be the president, but I want this Republican, albeit a moderate Republican, but the, um, I want, I want to, I want bipartisanship. Um, and Severino and those guys can say Mark Kirk was a Democrat, but unlike Brad Schneider or Barack Obama, Mark Kirk voted against every single tax increase and Mark Kirk voted against Obamacare uh, in Congress. So, uh, there were, on the fiscal issues, there was, there was a separation and I think that's where the voter lies in this area, whether it's Lake Forest or the North Shore. Um, it's that fiscally conservative, socially moderate um, uh, voter. And I think that, that's why.
That's not an idiot.
Right. They, 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 they don't care. Uh, they, they care about, they don't want their taxes going up. They don't want crime on their streets. And I think they want, we're seeing more and more, they want a choice uh, in education. They want a, a school choice because they feel that there's a lot of, um, is because of the lack of competition and the lack, uh, you see all these rich people sending their kids to private school, including, and, and teachers, union members sending their kids to private school. Uh, but foreign middle-class kids can't do the same thing because they can't afford it. I, 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 you know, I pay property taxes. I can't afford tuition to a private school and property tax. And I think a lot of people, so I, I think there needs to be a school choice. I, I hate to use the word voucher because it's been demonized. But, uh, look what, look what Governor Jeb Bush did in Florida on that.
Well, getting back to schools and, and the FOIAs, if, uh, the, the Lake Forest Police FOIA people, the city of Lake Forest FOIA people, they should teach Jennifer Hermes a, a thing or two about how to run a FOIA.
That's, is that the?
Service, yeah. Yeah. Cause.
She may just be doing her. She may just be carrying out orders from her bosses. I don't know.
Well, I, I gotta give credit to the.
I hate to pick on individual staff. I really do because a lot of time, having been a staff member, I sometimes have to do something I don't want to do, but I can't tell you that.
No, look. The information belongs to us as the tax.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. I think, uh.
So to delay it with these tactics that they're doing at the high school really makes me think, why would you do that? Case in point, Joe, here's, here's where I'm coming from. What they do is, again, they'll say, they'll ask for a time extension because it's too voluminous. How do you say that word? Voluminous?
Voluminous.
That's called screwing you over on time. They'll do that and they'll come back and say, you know what? There's too many records. What they could do, Joe? They could offer like the police department has and the city of Lake Forest has, they could say, hey, you know what? There's a lot of records here. Could we narrow it down to this? So it's better manageable? These people, Hermes, is that like a scarf Hermes? Hermes is in front of their Google machine that types in the request. Whether it's a Boolean search, whatever it is, based on what you asked for, and it comes back too many records. Okay. Why don't you just say, you know what? Here's a month's worth of what you're looking for. And then come back in a week and ask for more. They could do that, but they, they don't. They delay this. I have questions going back to June, Joe. For Melissa Oakley and, and the school walker and the Matt Montgomery situation.
Well, they did give you the emails that showed that, uh, uh, Mr. Caris, not, not Jim Caris, the guy running for Congress, he spelled, his name is spelled differently, but the husband of former Alderman uh, Caris, who, uh, I hope she found her cell phone.
Yeah.
The, uh, um, when it was deposition, uh, the, uh.
You get, you get, you get three records back, but they say that's too, how you say that word? Voluminous?
Um, but we have that email. We got that email where he says, uh, how can this guy be the voice of Lake Forest High School?
Yeah.
And say all this stuff and then the trail goes silent, right? I mean, whatever. I mean.
Uh, what, it, it shouldn't be, the onus shouldn't be on the person asking the inf. We don't know how many records are there. It should be, this is the parameter we're looking for. Give us what you can give back. And then once we get it, fine, wait a week and ask for more. I understand that. But to say no, and it's not just me. Okay. I got a stack full of other people that I think if we're smart, we combine our resources. Cause it, I don't know how else you do it when you have, I want to call them bad actors. Joe, maybe they're acting within the spirit, not even the spirit, but within the guidelines or whatever it's written out, but we own that information. And if I ask for it in a way that you can't deliver it, then you should play customer service agent and put it into a format that I can get information back right away.
Totally agree. I, I think one, it's interesting though, because again, I'm a big proponent of school choice. One of the people, things that people who are against school choice say is if you do that and you have all these private organizations educating kids that you lose the public scrutiny, that you lose the freedom of information. If, if, if your kid's going to a private school and all the kids are going to private schools instead of public schools, the public won't see what's going on. Well, your argument's moot if the public schools are hiding stuff.
I, I, I don't know, but the more that they play these games or look, I've asked questions incorrectly and I've received help from the police department of Lake Forest and the city of Lake Forest. And they, they, they've helped me. High school, zero. Other people that have responded to me have the same issue, zero. The, the Illinois Attorney General who, who I'm, I'm working with, very responsive.
Working with Kwame?
I, I know you say they're Democrat or whatever, but.
There's, there's some career people there that are there no matter who the attorney general is.
Why call spade to spade? They're, they're helping me. They're, they're helping me and they're.
I mean, Kwame Raoul is obviously eyeing a, being governor, uh, in the post Britster era, but whatever. I mean, it's.
It's out of my wheelhouse, Joe. I'm in Lake Forest. All I know is.
Well, you're, but you're also in Illinois.
I want to know, I want to know what, well, this affects me more than.
Sure, absolutely. Fair, fair point.
So I, I just want to know what, what, what is going on over there because if you're not transparent, then you have to look at the facts as you see them. And anytime when you see delayed, delay, stall, stall, what are you trying to hide? I think the worst. So there you go. Lake Forest High School, still there, still trying to get to the bottom of this, Illinois.
School board member, elected school board members, come on the show, explain yourself. Matt Montgomery, you came on the show once before. Come on again.
Rate, that approval rate on Montgomery, uh, was forty percent. I don't know if that's good or bad. I know it's less than half. Uh, what do our viewers and listeners, what is their opinion on how the school board is doing?
They probably don't know who the school board is.
Well, they.
Can you name all seven?
Can I? I, I can give you one, one, five.
Name all seven without looking. No Googling, no Googling. I can't, I can't. Another political guy. I can't name them.
I, I can name the ones that got to go.
Okay, fair enough. But I, my point here is that when you did that, and I talked a little bit about this last week, but when you did that poll on Montgomery, if Matt Montgomery was on the ballot, if there was an election for superintendent of the, of the school district, he'd probably lose. But he's not on the ballot. It's the school board members that hire the superintendent.
It's the caucus that hires the school board members.
But isn't the, the caucus for the schools is a little different than the caucus for municipal government because they, they have to take in Lake Bluff and Lake Bluff skews a little more to the left than Lake Forest.
The school board for, I think there's two, two seats on one, one, five that are dedicated to Lake Bluff people. They have some kind of unwritten.
Yeah, they have, it's all spelled out on the website. So I remember reading it when I first moved into town.
My, my point is, this is, I think, once more people understand what's going on. Cause what I've seen with our Lake Forest, Lake Bluff news, when we simplify things and we put stuff in there, we get more people responding, say, wow, didn't know that. Didn't know that. Okay. If you want information, you can get it in a timely fashion from the high school. You don't have to, uh, be delayed. Cause I think it's twice. If you try twice, people give up. That's I think what their game, game is over there. But you don't, you don't have to put up with this and getting back to, okay, Montgomery, not good. Why? Because I don't think he was fortright with his plans on the hundred and six million. That's trying to turn into a hundred and sixteen million by getting a lump sum. We had the school board that was involved putting the process in place to get this guy. And then you have the caucus that put the school board together. So it all starts with a week from about today that if you don't like what's going on, you got to go do something because right now there's very few people that are volunteering for this thing in this system. And there's not enough people putting in time for this. Now I could be wrong. I'm a couple of years out of this thing, you know, being in the caucus, but you have people that want to fill their resume and then you have people that want to, you know, do good. Okay. I don't crap, I don't give a crap about my resume. I care about going from point A to point B as quickly as possible. And if some people got, get run over, they get run over, but the, the job is done. So now do you like the school board? If you have kids in the high school, do you like how the high school, you voted on Montgomery, then do you know anything about the school board that is keeping an eye on Montgomery? Do you know that Montgomery sits in the middle of the school board? How do you feel about that? Should he be sitting in, in the middle of the school board, Joe? Just saying.
If you, it, it is a different mentality in having served on both the school board and the municipal board. There is a different mentality in the, uh, amongst school board members than there is amongst, uh, municipal, uh, council members. Um, I, 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 my four years as a municipal trustee were far better than my eight years on the school board. Now I dealt with a teacher's strike. I dealt with all sorts of crazy, uh, uh, stuff. We had, we, we went through superintendents like the Bears go through quarterbacks. But the.
Here's Rick.
Rick saves the day.
Should, should we, should we let him in or should we?
Sure. Why not? We're, we're a welcoming group. Maybe Prue will jump in in a few minutes. I'm on into the podcast room. We're all, there's plenty of room. Hey, Rick. Sit in the red couch if you don't know how to work Zoom.
Hey, Rick. Uh, zoom, zoom, zoom. We're, I'm sorry. I, I pulled a switcheroo on you. We, uh, we, we, we were going at nine thirty. The last thing on the list here is, do you got an, uh, an opinion on the, uh, apartment building that they want to put up that maybe?
Oh, I thought, I thought we were doing ten thirty. I thought I got it.
Yeah, I know. I was going, going back and forth. Um.
Ten thirty Eastern time.
Oh, okay. Yeah, right. Okay. All right. So there's no, no, no big whoop with me. Uh, yes, actually I'm, I'm kind of glad to see this proposal. Uh, this is a great idea. Uh, finally get a, uh, some use on that site which has been empty. It was the Amaco station. It was many years ago. Uh, finally get a, uh, some use on that site which has been empty. It was the Amaco station. It was many years ago. It was his last.
Did you watch the, uh, I watched a, 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 not the entire plan commission with parts of it, and I watched all the audience comments. Uh, the two concerns that I, I heard out of that were, uh, it's four stories. They, they want to put a luxury apartment building in that, that looks like the Deer Path Inn. The, the design looks very nice. Hopefully they'll have the drinks that Pete couldn't get at the Deer Path Inn that week he was there. But the, it's four stories and people were saying you wouldn't put a four story building in on, in East Lake Forest. Why would you put a four story building in West Lake? And I, I don't know what the feeling is on that. Is, are there any buildings in town that are four stories high? I, I don't know what the precedent is.
Over on Conway, um, at, um, the, uh, near the tollway. Uh, the office building, the office park, uh, yeah, they're more.
That's a very different area than, than. Cause there's people that live down the street and other, in, in houses and condos there.
There's no way. I mean, like that's, uh, that was one thing that, that jumped out at me about it. I mean, yes, it's, it's four stories, which is yes, the high for a lot of these areas, but are there, I mean, the nearest residential neighbor is quite a long ways away.
No, I don't know. There's that, um.
Do a Google map.
I keep wanting to say Mar-a-Lago, but there's that street there that starts with an M. Uh, and it's very narrow and stuff. And one, one woman from, from that street came over and, and spoke at the meeting and. Look, this is what, this is what this process is about. They don't just up and do this. Th- these things just don't happen. And one day you see bulldozers and stuff. There's hearings, there's deliberations. Uh, Kathy is gonna go and her, and the city staff is gonna go through this with a fine tooth comb. Uh, there's gonna be hearings about this.
The limitation on height, uh, that's on the east side. I, I think that's only, um, I, I think that's a limited geographical area. I don't know that includes this area, um, on the west.
They want to have this apartment building, luxury apartment building, and they want to put in a drive-through Starbucks. So the Starbucks that's across the street now I assume would close and move into this, this drive-through and obviously Starbucks makes more money in drive-through than they do in sit-down.
Yeah, I would think so. Yeah.
Places. So they, they, it's a win for them and people, people can get their, uh, their seven dollar coffees, uh, and not have to get out of their Range Rovers.
So right now everybody's very, I mean, I think the rental apartment, uh, uh, business right now is, is good with this economy.
Yeah, that's, that was something.
That's not what I hear.
You do it, you do it as a rental.
It's doing better than just about anything else in commercial real estate right now.
You do it as a rental. And then when market changes and, uh, and suddenly you can sell them as condos, you can convert them to condos and sell them and have a big cash payday and, uh, everybody goes on with life.
Like Bank of America.
Yeah, uh, well, like a lot of, a, a lot of places have done it that way. Uh, so yeah, I, it's, you know.
Because originally, the original plan was to do a medical office building.
Yeah.
And that fell through, I think the pande- pandemic and stuff, the commercial office space is, is a.
Yeah, off, office space in general is doing very badly, but, but the building that we're in, uh, at 191 East Deer Path, I mean, there's us and one other tenant.
There's two, there's two areas of commercial real estate that are doing well right now or development. That is apart lux- uh, upscale apartments. And, uh, warehouse and freight, you know, these Amazon type things. I don't think anybody wants that here, an Amazon warehouse. Uh, and I don't think it would fit. I don't think it would ever be considered, but those, look at the Allstate headquarters down in North.
It really wouldn't make much sense there just because, I mean, the tra- uh, the roads, you got walking.
And that's not being considered. So I don't want to send alarms or anything, but those are the two things in commercial that are doing.
What, what do Prue blockers complain about on this thing?
I don't, we're the, I don't know if those were Prue blockers that came to the meeting, uh, Pete. I think those were just people that lived nearby that expressed some concerns. Let's hear it out. Uh, would you want a four story building next to your house? I, I don't know. Maybe I would. Maybe I wouldn't care. I, I, I have to see. How this plays out. It's also a tight fit traffic wise.
If you're in a one-story building, then yeah, I, I don't think that, uh, you, you would want somebody four stories next to you. Uh, on the other hand,
It's Waukegan Road.
There is space between them, you know, if there is enough space and, you know, if, I, I, I really don't, I, I'd like to see a little bit more.
I don't think we said it at the beginning of this discussion, but it's Waukegan Road and Everett Road. And I believe it's the.
Yeah, no, I know.
East corner. It's like across from Sunset. Uh, Foods and stuff. And it is, right now it's an ice, there's no question.
Definitely, definitely an ice or now, yeah.
It is, uh, and the city has wanted to develop it. When, when I took the Lake Forest 101 tour, the bus tour with Kathy, um, she, we went right by it. She said the city very much wants to develop it. Um, I think the Dorfman article took her quote a little out of context because if you watch her whole presentation, she says, the city wants to develop it very badly. But, and then she went into the concerns about the parking spaces and stuff because if it had been an office building, parking is not as crazy as a residential apartment building. Because you have to have enough parking for the tenants as well as their guests. You've got this drive-through Starbucks happening with cars coming in and out. So I, I think this is the start of a process. It is not the final decision. Um, and let's see where it goes. Let's see what happens with it, how it plays itself out. I am sure that the political opportunists out there that wanted to do anything against the city um, will try to leech on to these concerned neighbors like they did, like, uh, our, our friend, the former Merrill candidate did when she ran, uh, where she found every disaffected group in town to form uh, what she thought would be a winning coalition, but it turns out it's not. And like I said, with all these development issues, the people that live next to it care very much, but you go two or three blocks away, nobody cares. And I think most people would be very happy to have a drive-through Starbucks, uh, here in Lake Forest.
The, uh, what, has there been any discussion of environmental issues? I mean, this was a gas station.
It's a good, good point. I.
The gas station of the, the lot on the east side, which was the former mobile station, we are constantly told is an ice, by the way, is an ice ore right across from the Deer Path Inn. Uh, and we're constantly told that nothing can be done with this property because it was environmentally contaminated. Why is this, uh, former Amaco station, uh, on the west side any different?
Well, you, former gas stations do get redeveloped, but they have to, they're usually redeveloped in things that are so commercially successful that you have the funds to do the remediation to, to get it done. You have to take the tanks out. You have to treat the soil.
They also.
EPA has some very specific guidelines there.
The, the way that the Illinois Department of, um, uh, I'm sorry, the, the Illinois I E P A, the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, uh, analyzes and grants, uh, uh, rights to, uh, build on contaminated land is, they have a system called TACO. Uh, a, and, uh, what TACO does, uh, is it creates, uh, a tiered system. Uh, that you can use it for, if it's, it can still be contaminated, but you can use it for commercial purposes, but not for residential purposes. Uh, here, this is a, um, uh, well, obviously a, an apartment building, very much residential. Uh, I was just a little surprised to see that they were going to, uh, develop that as a resident. You know, if you have it as an office building, in other words, uh, there are more lenient on the amount of benzene uh, that can be in the soil than they are if it is being residential.
Well, I'm looking at the notes here. Last week we had the, uh, block the box, people have their court date and it looks like there's gonna be a ruling on, uh, October 25th. So once that gets done, I bet that they're gonna hatch their wagon onto this thing.
Yep. Well, we'll, we will find out.
Opposition candidates often do.
On the east side, don't necessarily care about things on the west side.
Yeah, west side sucks.
Up yours.
Well said. Well played, Joe. Well played. Hey, uh, Rick, what's going down in the safety act? We talked about it, but what's from lawyers?
Yeah, we're under, we, we are underway, by the way. Uh, it did start on Monday. Uh, the world has not fallen apart, uh, so far. Um, and.
That's bad burglaries on Green Bay Road, man.
As a result of this is, uh, that somebody got charged with murder, uh, that might well have been able to, uh, bail out before, but can't bail out now because, uh, murder is not a, uh, is a required detention, uh, charge. So it, you know, it's actually got some, at least one person.
Ryan Hart spokesman, Rick Lesser has clarified the, uh, safety act here. Yeah, we talked, we've talked a little bit about this whole cashless, no cash bail a, a few minutes ago, but, um, uh, they're gonna pay, they're gonna hold up the cases that keep people in the jail. But as our guest last week said, there's gonna be a lot of cases where the, the state or the, the judge, whoever doesn't have the bandwidth and we're gonna get people out on the street who then commit more serious crimes. And it, the message to criminals out there is, hey, I get it. I, I won't have to, I can commit this crime and I won't be in jail. Uh, there are a number of offenses. Cook and Lake Counties because they got woke states attorneys that'll let me out.
There are also, um, uh, a lot of offenses which previously would have been bailed. Uh, and you would have had to post a bail, but instead all you do is sign your name at the police station and walk out. Uh, and that's, those are the crimes in particular that I, I fear uh, will end up being committed because, uh, a lot of these are being done in the heat of the moment. Uh, and, uh, you know, that's not much of a break from the, uh, dispute. When all they do is go to the police station, sign their name and then be released. Uh, a lot of times people are gonna go right back to whatever is, whatever, uh, wrongs they were doing. Uh, I, I, that's at least one of my fears. I did, um, uh, I was in a meeting yesterday, uh, with the bar association, uh, and one of our speakers was Eric Reinhardt. Uh, and Eric is, uh, very much defending, uh, the safety act. Uh, he believes that it is the right thing to do, uh, that previously, uh, people have been discriminated against on the basis of whether they have money, uh, which often relates to minority status. Uh, and have been held in jail indefinitely. Um, and because they don't have the money for bail, whereas, um, uh, other people who do have the money for bail, walk out the door. Um, you know, is, uh, that is the justification, uh, for this new law. Uh, whether the bad of the new law, a potential bad of the new law, namely, uh, not detaining, uh, criminals uh, will be outweighed by the new social justice uh, of no longer having minority people sit in jail while majority people, uh, walk out the door. Um, we're, we will see. Uh, and, uh, you know, it's a, it's a bold experiment. Uh, Illinois is the only state that has done it. Illinois is very much on the forefront on this, uh, led by, um, you know, the public officials like Eric. Uh, and he sincerely believes that they're doing the right thing. Um, I must say, by the way, I had another, a, a second meeting with Eric, uh, uh, yesterday uh, at a place called Duffer's Pub. I don't know if you guys have heard of it. Um, but, um, uh, he, he was, he was there and actually very helpful. Uh, we're on a committee together for the Lake County Bar Foundation. Uh, and I tell you, Eric, uh, has, was very helpful in the meeting yesterday. So, uh, he's on my good side now. Uh, even more importantly, uh, he picked.
Did you invite him on the show?
He picked up the check and bought the, and, and bought the nachos too.
He's buying votes.
My kind of guy.
Like any politician, no, but is, is, is he coming?
My love to be ball with nachos. Yeah, just.
Did you invite him on the podcast?
Uh, I, I did not. Uh, I was leaving him. I'm being, I'm being nice. I'm, you know, I'm, you know.
All right.
What about Schneider?
We, we don't actually breathe fire. Uh, well, Pete may, but.
We do. I'd love to have him on. I don't think.
Talking about Schneider? Sorry, I was tuned out.
No, no, we're talking about Eric Reinhardt.
How about Brad Schneider, Rick? He said he was coming on to your face.
Yeah, uh, well, tell you what, I will follow up with him, um, uh, and I'm, I'm gonna have a little bit more free time coming up here because I'm gonna be in Arizona, uh, in October. Uh, and I usually have a little bit more free time when I'm there, uh, than, uh, when I'm still here chained to the desk.
Got it.
Got it.
Okay, so that was the catch and release. We got the apartment building. We went on.
How about our, how about our homeless people?
Bank of America. I, I think I might put a mattress on their parking lot.
It's a nice place to live. You know, the, the funny thing is we, we were just talking with, um, uh, one of our guests recently, uh, who was extolling, uh, I, I think it was George Panda Leon, our former mayor, uh, who was extolling, uh, uh, some of the nice design features that we put in the central business district, including the, um, uh, Bank of America building, uh, such that we have walkways, uh, that, um, uh, go through uh, to make it more pedestrian friendly. Well, sure enough, uh, the walkway also has a secondary use uh, as a hotel room, uh, in the, you know.
Well, it's like benches at metro stations. Everybody thought that was a great idea until they became beds.
Yeah.
Bank of, Bank of America, why don't you be nice at it, homeless guy? And put up a bunk bed there. He and Christian can bunk out together.
Yeah.
Bring them breakfast. Come on.
Yeah, yeah, come on. At least, yeah, I think, you know, the, a bunk bed would be at least a very helpful thing.
San Francisco company. What do you expect?
Yeah.
Is that a wrong thing to say?
Put your money in a local.
San Francisco, now they, you know, now they're working on Lake Forest.
Put your money in a local bank. That's my two cents.
Wintrust, right?
I'm a Wintrust.
Yeah, they're pretty much, I, yeah, they used to be just the bank of Lake Forest, but now they're part of that whole nursery, but that's as close as you're gonna find these days.
Oh, very much, very much, however, a, a regional bank in our area, very much, uh, a bank that supports the local activities.
Absolutely.
I never see Bank of America, uh, sponsoring any kind of ag- events or activities around here. Uh, whereas, uh, Lake Forest Bank and Trust and Wintrust do it all the time.
Do you think their, the strategy is we're just gonna wait for cold weather and these people are gonna go away or they're just?
Yeah, I think that's.
There's gonna be more of them in the cold weather. There're gonna be more. They're gonna be.
Where?
On the. No, they'll be at the train station, it'll be on wherever there's those heated grates and stuff, you know, um. That's not gonna, that, it'll just change where they are, but they'll still be around as long as there are people that, uh.
They give them money.
They give them money or, and so they, they really, these are people that need help. They need to be in shelters. Um, but the legislation doesn't allow for that.
Uh, the legislation that Susan Garrick, Julie Morrison, Prue Blocker. Okay, they put in a place, if you're on the east side, you gotta deal with the homeless. If you're on the west side, you get a deal with burglaries because you're closer to the highway based on these, these, uh, laws that they voted on. Am I incorrect looking at that, Rick?
Uh, I, I think you're actually summed it up pretty well. Uh, you know, these are two problems, both the burglaries and, uh, the homeless, which Lake Forest has not had in the past. Uh, this has come upon us somewhat suddenly. Uh, and it seems to everybody that things have suddenly changed. Uh, but this is the result of law, law changes that have been occurring over the course of the last 10 years. Uh, and, uh, you know, it's unfortunate, uh, that we are now, um, uh, seeing the, the problems that arise, uh, through these progressive agendas.
Is there a Democrat that can be against crime? Is there a such thing?
Oh, yeah, there are many, I mean, there are many Democrats.
Daley.
Yeah, we, I moved, yeah, yeah.
Seventy-six?
Yeah.
No, I'm Richard Anka.
Oh, there are, there are many, you know, um, the state's attorney, uh, in, uh, in, uh, in, uh.
Will County.
Yeah, yeah, uh, you know, very, very forthright, uh, you know, there are a lot of.
We get that dude on?
Democrats out there.
I don't know if he's gonna come all the way up to Lake Forest. I mean.
Through Zoom?
This is, this is, well, well, let me, let me look into that one. I, I don't know him at all, uh, but we've, we've mentioned him a couple of times. Yeah.
We have mentioned him several times. You're right.
I think it's the Kank, I think the other one, the big, there, there's a hundred, two counties, a hundred county state's attorneys uh, oppose the safety act. Will County was.
Two that like it.
I'm thinking of who are the big Democrats, um, and I, I believe it's Will County and Kankakee County. Those are Democrats who are opposed to the safety act. So get them on. I'll tell you who's very much opposed to it, uh, is the DuPage County State Attorney. He is a Republican and it's Bob Berlin. Uh, and he's made it, he's been very tough on crime out there. And a couple of times people have gone to DuPage not realizing they crossed the county line from Cook and they're in for a rude awakening because Bob Berlin don't, don't play. He, he, he locks them up.
Yeah, I, I will say, uh, now Eric Reinhardt, um, our Democratic State's Attorney in Lake County, who does support the safety act, uh, has a lot of statistics, uh, that he believes, uh, show that, uh, crime is not really increasing. Uh, and that we are, uh, and that a lot of this worry about the safety act uh, is, i- is not valid and is not justified.
Tell that to the people on Green Bay Road.
Yeah, uh, yeah, that's, you see the latest burglary attempt on Green Bay Road there? Yeah.
I hate even calling it the safety act because I think a lot of people on the street. Yeah, whoever, whoever the Pritzker guy that was that thought that up.
Yeah, it's good, good work.
Who's against safety? But it's really the, Mary Cole called it the catch and release act.
Yeah, which is.
And that's, that's, that's what it is. And our guest last week, uh, you know, you, you talk to any law enforcement officer, uh, when they're. uh when they're off the clock and and can speak freely or a retired law enforcement officer like we had last week. None of them support this. None.
Well, let's get some of them.
No, fine. No, and they'll prove me wrong. They'll find two guys that support it uh somewhere or whatever. But I'm telling you, if you did a poll amongst law enforcement officers, uh, a secret ballot of do you support the Sa- the Safety Act?
Yeah, that's a no brainer. That's a no brainer.
unanimously against it and they're all gonna be voting for Mary Cole.
I I I'm tired of waiting on Prue Blocker and Garrett and and Morris and all these people that put, do these things that don't affect us to 10 years down. Wa- waste of time. I I think time will take care of themselves because this Democratic playbook, I don't, I don't know how much longer can keep going. I think more people like uh, who's the treasurer, Joe, in uh Lake County?
Ali Kim is your Lake County Treasurer.
I I keep pointing to her and even Vega. I think more people like that, whether you're Democrat or Republican, that are more forthright.
Right, both reasonable people.
Yeah.
Uh, competent and trying to, you know, trying to do their jobs. Uh, but one of the problems I will tell you, uh, and I ran into it quite a bit is that um, the progressives uh have a very quick and easy answer to any time that anybody says anything of of about, you know, the the policies that they are pushing uh which are harming uh the social fabric of areas like Lake Forest and Highland Park and um uh, and the answer is very simple. Well, what about Trump? Uh, and I have had that that response given to me uh thousands of times.
Well, or Prue Biden.
And I say, what about Madigan?
There's no.
What about Madigan? Madigan was there for 50 years doing far worse than what Donald Trump did.
Was a and and had much more, much more of a uh of an effect on Illinois.
Yeah, we pay higher taxes today because of Mike Madigan and the people that supported him.
Rick, bring it back.
The problem is that people are focused on one guy, Donald Trump.
Yeah. Well, he may, that's his persona that you wanted. He wants you to be focused.
Bring it back. Bring it back to local guys. Bring it back to Prue Biedler's little announcement she made after five months of reflection, Rick. Uh, instead of Trump, she says Pete Johnson spelled my name wrong. Did you read that little thing that said?
Yeah, you were, you were dark, I saw. Yes.
Dark and.
Well, you know, right now, I mean, I can see where she comes to that. Uh, you know, a dark background.
But it's like they they'll say, hey.
Joe and I are in the light.
That, no, but my point is the playbook is they they put down the news source that it's wrong, that isn't transparent, yet they won't go on to to give their side of things. So it's kind of, isn't it how?
Let's hope, let's hope that we can get uh, uh, let's hope that uh, uh, Prue Biedler will eventually decide that she wants to come on uh the podcast. Give her a chance to uh point out whatever is dark uh about uh.
Biddler.
Us. Uh, you know, it 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 always, it always seems like progressives, uh, the opposition, anybody who is not on the woke agenda uh is somehow dark. Uh, and.
What is the woke agenda, Rick?
Oh, well, uh, part of it is the homeless bill of rights. There's, but I mean, there's one part of the agenda.
Is that an elitism? Is it a uh virtual virtue? Is that a virtue signaling? Is that what they they do that they're better or their way is best? Like, what is the woke agenda?
Well, um, much like um, uh, Potter Stewart said, I know it when I see it.
So, so it's objective. It's instead of feelings, it's facts, right?
I don't like to use, I I u- I used it earlier, uh, but I really don't like to use uh those words. I really don't like labels because, look, you're, you're, people call you a conservative, yet you're wearing a shirt for Iliad that's a, that's a cannabis company.
I'm a capitalist.
So can you really, can you really uh label a person? You can't always judge a book by its cover. And uh, so I I I I I've used the word, I'm guilty of it, but I really don't like.
Another word, but what's the mentality?
The mentality is that society is wrong and that um criminals need second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth chances uh to redeem themselves.
Because they feel guilty. Isn't that where woke came from? Because they, they didn't earn their money. They grew up with their parents had money, coddled them.
Yeah, I just think, I, when it comes to criminal justice issues, I'm gonna listen to what my police officers tell me.
Yeah. But again, we have these woke people and we use the term, you don't want to use it, I'm using it because people understand what it is. It's people that feel guilty because they have a better life than somebody else because they didn't earn it.
Well, I will say, you know, it it's, it is a complicated and a broad uh description. And yes, that's certainly, I think, is part of it. Uh, these are people uh oftentimes who uh who did not have to, well, who had a lot of things given to them. Uh, and therefore are grateful for that and therefore also feel sympathy for others who did not receive those benefits. And so, you know, it's not an unreasonable uh or.
Part of the uh.
Wrong attitude. But uh, on the other hand, I I think that it also leads to a lot of um, cop Pollyannaish, if I can use yet another.
I have no idea what that means.
Uh, Pollyannaish uh being uh somewhat naive.
Oh, I I know what Lucky Sperm Club means.
Yeah, uh, J, how about JB Pritzker, the the king of the uh Lucky Sperm Club?
He's, he's, he's living off his great grandparents' wealth, if I understand the family tree there right or grandparents.
Born on third base and thinks he hit a triple.
I mean, look, Bruce Rauner earned his money, right? Bruce Rauner grew up a middle class kid. He made a lot of mistakes as governor, no question. But he earned his money, whereas Pritzker, I think, inherited it from his grandparents. And there's, and there's nothing wrong with people inheriting money. I I don't support.
Man, it is what it is. I wish, I wish I was born for that.
I mean, you could say the Bush family.
I'd be the biggest liberal around.
But, you know, there, there is, uh, you know, Sam Walton's grandson is now the richest uh resident of Illinois and he's a big liberal. I mean, Sam Walton's turning in his grave as his grandson's uh political views.
How many liberal farmers do you know? So basically that said.
Well, you know, I mean, one, one of the, I mean, and one of the problems that that we were dealing with here is, I I think that a lot of people here uh because they have homes and they have um uh cars and they have uh money uh that they look upon the homeless as being uh, you know, there but for the grace of God, go I. Uh, that I would be in that situation if if not, if I didn't have this in uh wealth or money that I had received and the benefits that I'd had, um, which is the the woke folk uh are now describing as being uh a- as being uh privileged. Um, but I will tell you, I think there are a lot of reasons for, you know, there's a, there's a probably a million homeless people in this country. I mean, I I didn't see, I did look it up and um, uh, the uh census was able to identify a little over half a million uh in 2020. Uh, you know, if you, if the census found half a million, I'm guessing there's at least a million out there. Uh, and for those million people, there are probably a million different stories as terms of why they are homeless. Um, one of the reasons I think is they don't want to go to rehab. You know, not everybody wants to get cleaned up. Uh, there are people who are perfectly happy uh getting drunk and doing drugs all day uh and hanging out on the park bench. Uh, I, you know, I I'm, you know, I'm, I'm sorry to let people know that, but there are people who are perfectly happy.
You know, we had, we had as a, we had as a guest on a few months ago now, uh, the guys from Christ Church and Mayor Rocky Ham from North Chicago.
Yes.
Talking about um their program, Renew Communities, it builds homes and stuff. And my philosophy, because the liberals will then say to people like us, oh, you don't care, you're insensitive and and you don't appreciate what you have and all that. And I say nonsense. I I point to programs like Renew Communities over at Christ Church here in Lake Forest. And that's what what they're doing. And what I, my philosophy has always been is I don't believe in handouts. I believe in a handout. Okay, I'll help someone move up. If you, I'll help you, i- i- if you're gonna work, I'll help you find a job. If you're gonna do the job, I'll help you learn stuff. Uh, what's that parable? Uh, it's better to teach someone to fish than to catch the fish for them? That's my philosophy on this and I.
Nothing more addictive.
Walk on that.
There's nothing more, there's nothing more addictive than getting a handout. So these people that grew up, they got a handout, whether it's Lucky Sperm Club or whatever, they got the money easy. They have no problems, you know, giving the money easy.
Someone that married into a big lumber company, company family?
But I'm saying, these small business owners that work their way up, you notice that they're not woke. Because I'll tell you what, nobody gave Mary anything.
Yeah.
You know. You know the Mary.
Yeah, no, I, I, right, I, I.
So.
So, me, I started out dead broke. I mean, I was, I got out of, when I got out of law school, other than loans, that's all I had.
Yeah. So people that go through that and then they see people that aren't going through that, call it work ethic or or whatever, that's the issue that we have. And the handout, we want to help people, but we want to see an end result to it because just giving the money, that doesn't correct anything. Like you say, put the signs up, right, Rick? Like in Arizona, they'd say, you know what? Don't give it to this guy. Give it to pads. Hey, pads, come on. You told me four times you're gonna reach out and come on. Bupkis. Give it to pads so they can deal with this guy. Hey, Bank of America, get this guy off your property or put up a bunk bed, okay? Fill up your parking lot with a tent and bunk beds, okay? We want to see an end result to this, right? We 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 want to see it fixed. We don't want it to perpetuate and turn it into San Francisco where Bank of America is from. That's all. That's my point. Anybody got anything else? Is there anybody in Lake Forest we didn't piss off? Raise your hand.
I got a couple, I got a couple.
I think we got all, I think we got everybody.
I got a couple things. Uh, I I got an email from one of our uh uh viewers or listeners. Yeah, and it was, I won't say, Brian um pointed out with all the heavy rains we've been having that we really do need the turf. He he forwarded me an email from the soccer uh thing where all the games had been canceled. And he said, this turf field can't come soon enough. Um, so he wanted to point that out and.
Shout out to Brian.
Yeah, uh, and then uh.
How come I see all the, by the way, how come I see all the, the professional, the NFL players and the Players Association is objecting to turf? They hate turf. I, you know.
Well, they're saying Aaron Rodgers got hurt because of it, right?
Yeah, exactly. Right.
I don't know. I don't know enough.
He's the latest.
We got the athlete here in Pete. Uh, what what's your take on the turf?
On the other hand, it is Aaron Rodgers, so.
You want grass? I said that from the beginning. You want grass. You want grass.
Iliad grass?
Nick Chubbs knee.
Is that back to Iliad? Uh, is that a, you know, the rock and roll stuff for Iliad?
No, but in this climate, to keep it up, un- unless, look, Las Vegas, they, okay, the Raiders, their turf goes in and out. Okay, they have the money to do that. Okay, in this climate, it's, it's either you take a set of that, set of dentary, what's the word, Joe?
Sedentary.
Thank you. You take approach to things where, you know, all right, fine, the kids won't play, we'll just cancel everything and we'll, you know, plant grass. Or you put in the turf and you let the kids play. So, in this climate, you have to do that. It's just.
Right, so, yeah, uh, the other thing, couple other quick things, uh, Lake Forest Scouts, uh, one in triple overtime against Libertyville, so shout out to the scouts.
And we're gonna put a little clip here from Johnny Kerr. Johnny Kerr, great analysis of the game.
Hey, Pete, how are you? I couldn't let another day go by without talking to you, man. I had you on the line. I had. Wow, you know, with with introduction like that, I mean, I guess I got a little bit of context here, huh? My, my hope was to talk about, you know, the three overtime win. I want to talk about the article you wrote last year regarding the scouts. You're more knowledgeable, you go to more games. If I'm the smartest guy in the room, I leave the room. So I need people that knows, knows more, more than me. You know what I mean, John? I had School Walker on the show and when we started getting into things, talking about the school, you know, he he had to do other things. So I'm just trying to get my facts straight. Talking about that overtime win, three overtimes, the offense this particular year, okay, so just to throw some stats at you.
Yeah.
Through the Libertyville game, they have scored 116 points total through uh four games. A year ago, for for all nine games, they scored 139 points. So there, there is an improvement without a doubt from this year to next year. Um, last year was historically bad, uh, a combination of reasons, a little bit of just the personnel they had, the youth that they had, a very small senior class, uh, and so they weren't able to fill some of those roles. This year, it's just you're seeing more talent. They've got a massive junior class, a lot of whom got experience a year ago because they had to force those guys, right? And you're also seeing a situation, Pete, where the Lake Forest Scouts, I mean, I I, they have entered the transfer portal. Um, as, you know, it, that is a buzzword now, right? I mean, Coach Prime in Colorado, you see what he's doing now with the transfer portal? Well, on on Thursday night, Pete, two players, one in particular named Jamari Brown, uh, who I'd heard about, had practiced during the summer, was on the roster. And you know how it is, you hear whispers into the dads and talking. At Chiefs after the game, hey, you gotta take a look at this guy. But nobody knew when he was gonna be eligible. Well, he became eligible Thursday and he made a huge difference in that game, making four great catches, one for a touchdown over, over a couple of guys, making some athletic plays nobody else could have made on that team. So you, so I think all of it cumulatively, Pete, has them in a position, three and one and, you know, likely four and one, when they beat Zion, which I know this, when when we're recording this now, when this runs, they will likely be four and one.
Yeah, they gotta beat Zion. I, here's what I said, John. I was, I was so bummed out because of that experience. I had some, uh, I know some people that went through the program and I've heard how they communicated to the kids, so I had a bad taste in my mouth. I also was looking at, you know, why are they always shotgunning every play and this poor center when he screws up? There's so much pressure on him.
Yeah, yeah, the offensive line play has been an issue over the years, I think, with 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 the team, I think. Not so much because of the coaching or because of the scheme. I think it's just, they just don't have a lot of big guys.
Yeah.
When they face teams like Warren, Stevenson, Libertyville, teams that have typically big fronts, just becomes a matchup uh problem. But but this particular group, I think, is doing a pretty good job through the first, you know, uh, you know, four or five games of the season.
I gotta eat some crow because I said they're only gonna win one more game. I thought they're gonna lose, beating Libertyville, I mean, that's, they're, they're always a good team. I'm like, wow, to do it in three overtimes and now Zion. I thought Zion would be the next one and I thought they'd, they'd lose out. Uh, they're gonna have a better record than I thought, so I'm gonna eat some crow. That's, that's, you know, that's.
Well, well, especially, well, especially, Peter, if you're eating it in where the predictions sort of undervalued them, right?
Yeah.
You'd much rather be in a position where you're saying, I undervalued this team. And look, understandably so after how they played a year ago and there were so many unproven guys. I think they always play great defense. Coach Bagnoli's been there, I think, since this is his 21st season. He was also the team's defensive coordinator and he gets those defensive guys who are, you know, like literally standing next to you and me. These are guys who look like they're, you know, um, working at Jewel, right? Or kind of working at Highlands. Or just normal looking high school guys, right? Uh, but but he gets them to play with their hair on fire. He runs a great scheme. They've got a couple of really, really good young linebackers and and a couple, couple of new secondary guys that they're kind of breaking in. Uh, but they, they always stay in games because their defense is really, really good. And they're sure they have a good offense to finally complement the other side of the ball.
Now, getting back to your article last year, do you think they, they do a good enough job on halftime adjustments to? Because they have their scheme and it, again, the reason I'm talking to you is because I don't know enough. I played ball, but I don't, I'm not close enough. You're there. Do you think they make the adjustments that they need to do on the offensive side of the ball to be competitive? Obviously, they're gonna be four and one. They're gonna beat Zion. You know, getting into the playoffs, you think they can take it to the next level?
I think their adjustments are based on personnel that they have, based on on what the opponent is, right? I mean, any adjustment that you make, if a team is saying, okay, well, we're not able to run the football, so what can we do schematically to sort of be able to run the ball? Maybe if they're plugging the inside, meaning they're running defensive linemen or they're stunting through the A and the B gap, maybe we stretch it. Maybe we go to the outside a little bit, or if it's the opposite, if they're stopping us on the perimeter, we go inside. If you're talking about those kind of adjustments, I think, yes, I think they've got a really good coaching staff, a good experienced staff, Phil DeWalt, who is their offensive coordinator, has been doing it now, I think, since, actually after Tommy Reese uh left in 2010, 2009, he's been there for a long time. I think, I think he's a really good coach when they have personnel. When they had Leo Schidler two years ago, he had to make an adjustment to go to more of a running type scheme. I think they are a team that likes to. I think they are a team that likes to run the football, throw it deep and run play action and do boots off of that. That's their offense. They're a spread team, but they're not really chuck it all over the field kind of a spread team. But they made the adjustment when they had the right personnel. I mean, a couple of years ago, I mean, Pete, they had a quarterback in Leo Schidler who was all state. He's now at Notre Dame.
With his brother or?
Yeah, Eddie, yeah, Eddie is also at, at Notre Dame as well, who was a defensive player, graduated in 2019. And then the year before that, we missed that season because that was the COVID year. They had a, a quarterback named Richie Hoskins, who was the conference player of the year and is now at Vanderbilt. And is the second receiver on their depth chart. So they had two special athletes. He went to more of a quarterback centric type offense. So he made that right adjustment based on personnel. And I think now they're going back to what they like to do, which is to run the football, run play action, throw it deep, throw some vertical routes. And they have the personnel to do it, especially with this transfer who just kind of dropped in their lap on Thursday night against Libertyville. Who's a special athlete.
Well, talking about personnel, I'm looking at the great schools that, you know, the way they're getting, uh, the inflow. Looks like they're going to have some, uh, rough crop coming in. Are you seeing that too, John?
Well, you know, Pete, I also, I coach our eighth grade team. And so I've been a, a coach in the, in the junior scouts, youth football program. This is since, you know, 2015, 2016. This is my eighth or ninth year coaching there. So I, I see it, you know, I see things in terms of where the numbers are and where the participation rates are. They're a lot better than they were, I think, you know, pre, pre-COVID. I think you saw a bit of a decline. That's what affected that, that senior class a year ago. I mean, they're like maybe 14 or 15 seniors. I think you had a function of the head injury hysteria. And I called the head injury hysteria because it wasn't really based on actual, not to get political here, Pete, because that's not what this is about. Based on some of the COVID response stuff too, which is very hysterical, not based on science. Most of the head injury stuff was the same way, but it affected Lake Forest. You saw a lot of younger parents, I think, who were skittish about getting their kids into tackle. And you saw a bit of a decline in participation. What happened in 2020 was we, meaning the, the rec department and the community. Started a seven on seven and kind of a flag program, or at least a more robust program, and it was non-contact. And that allowed, I think, a lot of younger moms and dads who were still a little bit nervous about, about the contact aspect. To get into the program and do it with a much more softer landing spot. And so you saw a lot of nine, 10, 11 year olds enter the program. And you're seeing that now, I think, with the high school program. The numbers are up, the varsity numbers are back in the high 50s, kind of low 60s. Terms of where the participant, the, the freshman levels were in the upper 30s, even hitting 40 in terms of numbers. So I think you're seeing it, and this is, you're seeing this all over the place, I think, Pete. You're seeing this, you know, in oil all over the country. National High School Federation came out with a study last week. High school football participation rates are up for the first time in over a decade. So I think you're seeing a bump in those numbers and certainly it's, it, it's happening here. And I think it's a function of younger families getting into the sport. It's being taught better. We as coaches, we all have to be certified. We all have to go through this whole process to actually educate ourselves about safety. I think the equipment is a lot better and I think families are much more comfortable about playing the sport and starting, I think, their, their sons at a younger age.
Well, let's talk about the mental health aspect. That, that's something that I, that I know a little bit about, concussion protocol. You know, they have those, uh, big old muffin heads that they put on that can reduce concussion, uh.
Yes.
Ten, 10% on each side. Uh, are they using that in the high schools yet?
They are not. I think there are, there are some programs that I think use it in preseason. I know some of the Catholic league programs, I know Loyola, for instance, I've seen them use it during the preseason. They might do it in practices. But in terms of what you see, they had the muffin heads, almost, you know, the, the sort of rugby style looking type, type helmets. That is not, uh, I know Lake Forest High School does not use those in practice or use those during the season. I think the way that they sort of diminish the impact potentially of, uh, head injuries is just limiting contact. You'll see where you will see less tackling. They will kind of shorten practices. They won't go live as much. I mean, they won't go to the ground. We do that at the youth level. You know, we minimize contact. If it comes to one of our practices, we really don't go live that much at all. Some of that's just a, a function of, hey, keeping the kids healthy, making sure they're having a good experience, making sure that they stay with the sport. I want to keep playing it when they get to high school.
Well, you want to prove to the moms out there especially that, hey, you know, we're, we're keeping an eye on things. You just see repeated events like that Michigan statewide receiver that got laid out and put back in the game. And of course, that's what pops up on, uh, TikTok, YouTube shorts. The, the marketing of it is that it's up to the coaches, coaches and the players if they can go back in and that's not the case. It needs to be a third party, independent party that says, hey, you can go back in and get that trust level going down. If they can't do that in college, I'm just wondering, what do they do in high school that you've seen that, you know, moms can be assured that, hey, wow, my kid's not going to go back in. If they've had a brain trauma.
Yeah. So there isn't the type of operational protocol, Pete, that you see. At the college or the pro level, just because you just don't have the staffing or the ability to do that many. I know in the NFL level, I think there's an actual independent use of whether that, that's a medical professional or somebody from.
Right, 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 right.
Who's literally just monitoring those types of incidents. I don't know if that's the case in, in college or not. There might be some schools or conferences that do that, but obviously you've got more medical personnel monitoring that. At the high school level, yes, they do have EMTs that are there for every single game. There are train, you know, certified trainers. I mean, Dr. Roger Shams, I'm sure everybody knows in this area. Orthopedic doctor works for, uh, Illinois Bone and Joint. He and his staff, I mean, I, I've seen him at, at every game this year, Dr. Shams. And he has a staff of three or four other doctors who are at games typically in Lake County. They are watching and I'll, I'll, I was having a conversation with Dr. Shams on Friday. He said, hey, John, hold that thought because his eye was on the game. Right? Cause he's got to watch for those situations that you just described. So.
Right.
I have not seen any incidents this year that I think would make me pause and say, hmm, you know, what kind of happened there?
Right, right, right.
Why is it kid going back to the game? My experience as a youth coach too, Pete, if anybody, any moms or, or listening, anybody else.
Yeah.
We do have a certified trainer who's at every single one of our games and, and, and that is requirement from the Chicagoland Football League. Which the, you know, the, the governing body and league that actually runs the youth football program, uh, here in Lake Forest. And we as coaches, we get trained in that area. We have to take, uh, positive coaching alliance training, you know, we have to go through a whole certification process to look for those types of things. So in my opinion, the game is safe, is as safe as it's ever been. And I think you've got people who, at the end of the day, want individuals and young people to have good experiences and to keep coming back. And I think from a health perspective, a fitness perspective, I think that, you know, the game is in good shape right now.
Fair enough, John. What I'm getting from this is number one, lay off Spagnoli. They're going to have a better year than anticipated.
Yeah, yeah. Coach, uh, you know, I, I, you know, he's, uh, Spagnoli is a interesting guy. He's interesting, he's an interesting guy, Pete. I mean, I, I, I've covered the guy for a, a, a long time and, and have known him for a long time. And I, you could probably touch a 10 different people and everybody would have sort of a different opinion, but it, it wouldn't be down the middle, Pete. It would be kind of binary either side of it. I'm more in the camp of the longer you're, you're around the program, the more you appreciate him. And the amount of time and effort he puts in. And again, he usually has his guys playing at their max capacity. And I think, you know, you're seeing, uh, he, he put more time into the program this year, I think in the off season. He actually went out and went to a bunch of coaching clinics and, and came back and tried some different things. He knew they couldn't have a repeat of last year. And so I think you're seeing some of the benefits of that, I think, through the first, you know, four or five games. But I, but this is a playoff team. Uh, how far they're going to go, we'll see. They'll be in Classic Day again. So. Oh yeah, no, no, they're going to, I mean, five wins gets you in, Pete, at least in the North Suburban Conference. You gotta, you gotta get to six to, to automatic. But because the competition they play is usually so good, they, they have a formula based on, on opponents' wins. Lake Forest, the, the playoff outlook came out today, by the, I just say. Lake Forest is sort of ranked 11th in Classic Day. They have 20 opponent wins. They get that fifth win, they're going to be in. And it's a team that has the potential to make a run in the postseason, uh, just kind of based on what we've seen, I think, through the first half of the season.
My attitude is changing. Uh, I have.
Good. There you go. Mental health. Come on, Pete.
Mental health, right. But you're also doing a 180 yourself based on the article you did last year that I, that I, that I read over. You know, what's changed from that article that, you know, the ar- article I'm talking about? You're pretty critical. What, what's changed in your opinion?
Well, I mean, nothing's really changed in terms of what I wrote in the article. I still believe, you know, the, the sort of tenants and the, and the steps that I wrote there. So what's, what, what's changed a little bit is, is, I mean, obviously time. I wrote that back in November or December of, of last year. And now we've got, you know, four or five games of 2023. So we've seen, you know, it, I mean, you can believe, but now we have evidence, right? To sort of back up some of that.
Win.
I still believe if, 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 if you're looking at, 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 you know, picking nits, right? Or things to sort of take with the program. I still think that it's, it's a program that is not as offensively oriented as it should be. And what I mean by that is they are a, I'm trying to think of the, the, the way to phrase this, is it's a program that thinks that it can win with defense. And if the offense comes around, great. Right? If we win, if, if, if we're successful, it's going to be because our defense is going to be, is going to be great. We're going to get takeaways and we're, and we're going to figure things out on offense. And it doesn't encourage, let's just say, innovation in that area. Meaning even in the off season, guys going out, working with personal coaches, getting private training, those types of things. I think it's a program that prefers to say, hey, we believe in what we do. You should be with us. I'm somebody who thinks that, hey, if you want your, 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 your son or daughter to succeed in anything. You need as many positive influences in their life as possible. Go, and, and if you can afford it, go get private coaching, go get private training, do, do what you can. And then, and then you can work that into the system and the culture of your high school team. And I still think that they don't necessarily encourage outside ideas. So it's a bit insular in that area. And so that, that to me is, is one, and, and there are some things that they do kind of personnel wise, even this year, which I think validates argument. But I think they've, but they've made some steps, I think, in this off season. And again, talent overrides everything. And if you have talent, and they do, and they do this year, uh, at some key positions.
Uh, you can, you can overcome that.
It makes a difference. Yeah. I mean, but it's still, it's still a defensive, again, look, this is, uh, Pete, I'm, we know Lake Forest. I mean, you know, these kids go home and they have every privilege and they're driving. I mean, it's, I mean, you can pull, pull in the west campus tonight after practice, there'll be four or five guys pulling out of there in their dad's Tesla, right? Okay? So, and, and I don't think that's the case, you know, 15 miles up the road, right? Yet Spagnoli gets his guys to play with an urgency. That, that beguiles sort of the comfort that they live in. That's the, that's the best way that I can say that. They come, you know, come to the Zion game, come to one of these games this year. I think there's only, only four home games this year. But there's an intensity and sort of a blue collar mentality, workman like way that this defense especially plays. The unit plays that just is sort of in conflict with, you know, the type of lifestyle that these.
Yeah, right, right.
Many of these young men have, right? And the privileges that they have on a, on a day to day basis.
It's like the first time in their life where, you know, somebody's telling them, no. You know, this is not acceptable, right? So I, I, I get that.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure. I think it also, I think there's a, there, there's a sense of accountability you have to have.
Right, right.
When you're part of an organization and they learn that, hey, my, if I don't do my job, that affects, you know, the guy next to me.
Well, John, I, I'll, I'll let it go there. I appreciate you spending the time with me. I would love it, if, if it's possible, if it's just the phone. Or if we could do Zoom, uh, you know, a little recap on the game because. I have changed, based on what I've been harping like the last month or so on the team and talking to you, I'm going to change my attitude. I'll watch the game, see if I see something different. Would you like to get together and, you know, have a little segment? Just say, you know, what's going on in Lake, not just football, but, uh, you cover all the other sports too, right?
No, I'm primarily football, you know, now, you know, Pete, you know, back when I was days when I was a full-time sports writer, yeah. Covered a lot of different sports. Now I just, and I do a, a newsletter for the scouts football team. It's kind of an independent thing that I, I started, uh, a few years ago. It's just kind of a fun, fun side project. But, but yeah, look, I'm open to having, you know, conversations about all sorts of stuff, you know?
Okay.
Podcasting's an awesome form of, you know, communication and I, you know, I still do write a, you know, I've got a, a, a weekly column that I do.
How do, how do, how do we get ahold of your content? How do we get ahold of your content, John?
Yeah, for sure. You get, I mean, if, again, if you want, if you want scouts football, it's, you can go to, uh, scoutsfootball dot, you know, substack.com. At scoutsfootball.substack.com. Many people listening, I'm sure you subscribe to other writers on the, on the platform, uh, Substack. So I have a Substack for Scouts Football. I also have a, have a newsletter where I do, um, you know, not as much as I, as I did back during, you know, the, uh, kind of COVID. Hysteria stuff from, from 2020 to 2022, but I still have a weekly column where I write about politics, you know, write about sports, you know, write about, you know.
Wait, you write about politics? You can't do that in Lake Forest.
Well, not local politics, uh.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I know, I know. I, I kind of, I don't, I don't, I don't look, although it, it's some, it does translate sometimes to, uh, local. But it's not a Lake Forest centric, uh, newsletter. It's just more what's happening in the state and what's happening, you know, kind of nationally. But there you can just go to kerr.substack.com. That's my last name, K E R R dot substack.com. Subscribe there. It's all free. So just type in your, you know, email address. You can get on the list and, uh, you are subscribed. But yeah, if you want, I'm, I'm happy to hop on and talk about all, you know, actual football. We can talk about what's going on and other, other current events for sure.
Well, I'll tell you what, for the next time you come on, I'm going to leave you with this thought. I've had a few listeners and viewers send me emails and texts. People are worried about, uh, the high schools trying to get rid of the scouts name. Have you heard that?
Oh, I have heard rumblings about this for years, you know, Pete, like this is, I mean. This is sort of, and it seems like this is an interminable or a, a endless debate amongst, you know, folks in, in the community. I think now, certainly because of social media and those platforms, uh, it makes it more, more urgent. But, uh, but yes, I think there is.
You, you ever, okay.
A movement towards it. And we can certainly have that conversation. Yep.
Yeah, yeah. Well, well, we'll put it out there. Let's, let's, you know, the, the listeners and viewers, uh, digest that. John, I would love to have, see your smiling face next week if we could.
Yeah, you know, Pete, let's, uh, uh, happy to hop on and, and he said, normally I'm kind of at home. Again, I had to, had to leave today for an outside appointment.
Yeah.
Um, um, but, but yeah, normally I kind of work from home and I'm in the home office, like, you know, all the, all the thousands of remote workers that are listening on your audience, right? So that's been a part of your audience. But, but yeah, let's kind of hook up and ping me or something after this call and let's, you know, schedule time and we can chat. Hopefully sometime next week.
All right, John, you talked me off the ledge. Go scouts. I am the biggest two-faced hypocrite that there is.
It's homecoming, Pete. Come on now.
John, I'll get this out as soon as possible, my friend. Thank you.
And they're playing Zion, Pete, so nothing to worry about this week.
You know they're Zion because they're all glowing like, uh, Simpsons.
On that note, I think I'm going to hang up here, Pete.
All right, goodbye.
The team. And we're, we're recording this show on Wednesday. Friday night, and we drop the show usually Saturday mornings, but Friday night is homecoming against Zion Benton. Uh, let's beat the ZB's. Uh, Jeff Urso will have the brats all warmed and ready to go. Uh, for it. So obviously by the time this show airs, if it drops on Saturday, everyone will know the results, uh.
Hey, I'm glad.
So I hope, I hope the scout, the scouts are three and one. So. Isn't it good to see all of the, all, all of the paintings on the businesses in the central business district? That's very cool. The high school kids. I mean, I love that. I think everybody loves that. And the flags that they put up downtown and stuff. That was, my wife loves, she, because we've never, we've lived in a bunch of, several different places, not a bunch. But we, this is the first community we've ever lived in that there is such spirit in the community of the windows, the flags and stuff. So that's awesome. That's one of the great things about. Please, folks, let's not be judgmental over the paintings that the high school kids put on the business of all the silly.
Is that still going on, that one club?
Wow.
Did they let that club put that up, that woke club?
Um, that I don't know if they did it again.
You know what I'm talking about?
But frankly, if they want to put it up, God love them. They, they have every right in the world to put that up. Not my hill to die on. I just think the school spirit is great. Let's hope that they beat the ZB's. Um, more power to them. And then Sunday evening, uh, Sunday afternoon, out, out in the, the west side of town near me. Bagpipes, best bagpipes and bonfire. Is it bonfire and bagpipes? There's only one bonfire. I keep wanting to say. One by, it was one big bonfire. There's really only one bonfire. Burns for days. It is a great, you know, I got a little biased here because I got a very good view of it. But it is, it is a great.
Got a picture to share with the class?
Whoever came up with the idea. Find pictures. I'll send you some pictures from last year. Yeah. But they, um, the marketing, I'd love to have sat in on the meeting where they said, okay, we're going to have a bonfire. And then we're going to have, and then we're going to have bagpipes play, guys in bagpipes play. And then we're going to have a guy parachute in wearing a kilt. Who thinks of that?
Yeah. And it's 120 bucks.
These dudes parachute in. It's worth the price of admission.
He's not a Democrat.
Or if you live, or if you live nearby. Every year for the last 10 years, so it's, it's worth. It's, it's a fundraiser for Open Lands. Uh, you can go on the Open Lands website and, and, and purchase a ticket. Where you can find somebody that lives nearby and watch it at their house. I know it's less than that. I think it's 70, it's, I think it's 50 if you're a member and 75 if you're not, if you're not a member.
Alright.
But it's a, it's a really cool event. Uh, and I, I think Open Lands is a, uh, a great concept. That makes Lake Forest unique, that you've preserved a lot of these open spaces. I think it improves the quality of life for all of us. So. It provides a space for homeless to live too.
Homeless, yeah.
That's a separate issue. Uh, maybe they'll, maybe they'll sleep, maybe they'll sleep, if it gets cold, they'll sleep by the bon, because that bonfire burns for like two or three days. It does not. And, and good place for a tent too. I don't get many ideas, but, but the, uh, the, uh, it, it, it's a really cool event. The people that, 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 uh, put time into this, uh, mad props to them.
We should have them on sometime.
Maybe we should. We should have Open Lands on. Maybe we should. We should have Open Lands on. There's a lot of stuff to talk about. But the bagpipes and bonfire or bonfire and bagpipes, forgive me that I'm getting the name wrong.
Very
Great event. Looking forward to it.
Great local organization, yeah.
Yeah. And now last year, we talked about the flags downtown. Last year, the weekend of that event, they had the Open Land flags downtown. But this year, it's the same weekend as homecoming. So we're, I'm just curious, which do they fly the Lake Forest Scout flags on Friday and then on Saturday or Sunday, switch them over to the Open Lands flags? I'll be curious to see what they do. But the community spirit here is great for things like that.
I don't want to die any, I don't want us to die on any hills. I just want to bring up the the window painting. When you have a small business that doesn't know what's going up on their windows and they put something that doesn't agree with their political beliefs, that that is an issue. It has been
Fair point. That said, I could care, I could care less if someone wears a pride flag. I'll be very honest with you.
I
I don't care. I don't care. And I think
If you care, the business, the business cares.
Republican, as a Republican.
Yeah.
I think the GOP wastes a hell of a lot of energy on these crazy social issues when they should be talking about taxes, crime and school choice.
Corruption. And let me throw corruption in there.
Corruption, like Mike Madigan.
Yeah. Right or wrong, there there, you have a business and you're, 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 somebody's not gonna shop in there. It's not gonna be a boycott, but somebody's not gonna shop based on what's painted on that window. So that's that's up to the small business owner. And number two, I'm eating crow because I gave a lot of crap to the football team and they, three overtimes and they beat Libertyville.
Triple overtime, bud.
Impressive. I'm eating crow. I like a little barbecue.
I hope they beat the ZB's.
That was the one game I thought they were gonna win. So they're, Zion's no good.
Well, that's probably why they're
Who's the best team, Pete, football man? Who's the best team in the conference?
Warren.
Warren?
Oh, Warren, Warren Township.
Yep.
The Blue Devils?
Don't go to the game there.
We used to, maybe when I grew up, the
You'll get misdemeanored.
Niles North was in that conference back in the 80s when I was there. And my senior year, the foot, we never were good at any sports except gymnastics. But my senior year, they won the, they won the football conference and by beating Lake Forest. Back in fall of, I was, I was class of 87. It was fall of 86. That was, that was literally the first time I ever went to Lake, set foot in the city of Lake Forest was when Niles North played the Lake Forest Scouts back in the fall of 1986. And they beat them and and won the North Suburban Conference, but then lost in the playoffs to Maine South.
I was a lawyer and a dad.
I was a 17 year old high school senior.
That's, that's one of the problems.
I didn't play on the team. I want to make that clear. I was just a fan.
Somebody says something about the 80s, all I think about is, oh, yeah, I was a lawyer. And yeah, I was a lawyer then throughout the 80s.
I was a teenage punk.
Dad, too.
Living the Reagan revolution.
Yes. And it was, it really was. I mean, Reagan really did
Do we leave anything on the table?
Sorry, Pete.
No, I said, do we leave anything on the table here?
I think we've done enough. We've had a whole solo.
I think we defended everybody in the world.
Okay, good, good. Hey, if you don't like us, come on. You like us? Come on. Just watch us and listen to us. I do.
Now play, now play my theme. What's the Deion Sanders slogan that he says at the end of his speech every week? Now play my theme music?
Walk off music?
No, he, I mean, he gives those locker room speeches before the game. He ends it with, now cue up my theme music or now like
I know they're cheering when he goes out. And that hit on Hunter, man, he he cut his liver up on that hit.
All I can say is it's it's working, you know?
Yeah.
By the way, I may be out at Colorado next Friday night. I may be wandering around.
Give me my theme song. That's what he says at the end of every
Joe, what's your theme song?
What's his theme song? Yeah. What is his theme song?
I want to know what Joe's theme song is.
Yeah.
Rick, I want to know yours.
Let me think about that. We'll do that next week.
Well, we'll let our viewers pick.[1664.88]